Did you do it, sorry?
Hmm?
You don't. Yours.
Yeah, Amy did it last time. He's doing it. He's doing it everybody.
Taking volunteers on your guy. Uh, you're taking volunteers on your guy.
Okay. Right here.
We're just into.
Yeah.
I, I didn't. Todd, you ready?
Here's I am.
All right. Good evening. I'm going to call the Senator City Council meeting in order for February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Everyone in attendance, please stand or join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Todd, will you lead us in prayer?
Please remain standing for prayer. Our Father in heaven, we bow our heads at this time and give thee thanks, Father, for our many blessings. We ask that thy Spirit be with us tonight as we go through the business of the city that we would make decisions pleasing unto thee. We're thankful for those members of the council and the mayor and our department heads for all that they do for the city and the employees that we have. We're thankful for all that they do. We're thankful for those in attendance tonight. We ask that, again, that thy Spirit will lead and guide us this evening. And we say these things humbly in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call, sir.
Mr. Eland.
Here.
Darren Warren.
Here.
Josie Reed.
Yeah.
Keith Higginbotham.
Here.
Amy Rochette.
Here.
And then we have Justin.
Yes, Justin's up there. Call his name.
Justin, are you here?
Justin said Adam is a panelist. He just texted me.
You can talk. I hear him sniffing.
Perfect. Hey, I'm here.
Okay, okay. Let's go.
Let's do it.
All right, mute. There we go. All right. All right. So first on the agenda is approval of the city council meeting minutes from January tenth, twenty twenty-three. And they have been in Dropbox for a little bit. Does anybody have any questions on those? Not somebody like make motion to adopt the minute council minutes from January tenth, twenty twenty-three? Anybody? You got a motion? We have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Anyone oppose? All right. Next is acknowledgement receipt of the Senator Water and Sewer Commission meeting minutes from December twentieth, planning commission meeting minutes from January third to January seventeenth of two thousand twenty-three, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board minutes from November seventh, twenty twenty-two, January ninth, and February sixth of twenty twenty-three.
The motion to accept them.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second? Acknowledgement receipt. Did Misty second? All right, all in favor? You want to pose? All right. Carl's not here tonight. He's a little bit under weather. So he had left these fine packets for everybody and I'll, I'll go over them. And then he's got all the breakdowns of all the different things as you go. But basically, you know, this is the first month of the year. We are eight point three three percent through the year. Revenue wise, right now, we're at eight point four one percent. And expenditure wise, we're at six point five five percent. And I skimmed through these and everything, you know, looked, looked to be, you know, basically in order. Uh, the street fund, and that's always a little bit behind just way the turnback comes in. Uh, we're at six point two one percent of revenue and two point seven three percent of expenses. And then the court report is attached inside the, the, Dropbox. And then also all these supplemental reports, I did email these to everybody last week. Carl gave them all to me, so I, I email them off to you. And then the summary is in there too, so. Any questions that I can try to answer? Carl said if you did have any questions, you know, feel free to call him too. If not, would somebody make motion to accept the January, uh, financial report and also the, uh, January court, yeah, the January court report? We have a motion. We have a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next is department reports. Uh, all the departments are in there and most of the department heads are here with us. Uh, does anybody have any questions on the department reports that were provided? Okay, here none?
On good reports.
Okay. All right, here none. Next is public comment. Uh, this is the opportunity, if you want to speak about anything on tonight's agenda, or if you have any comments that you want to hear, you know, the council to, uh, answer to you. Uh, you will be given three minutes. And, uh, we'll allow you to speak, you know, to them. Uh, this is not a question and answer session now, so we'll listen to the comments and, you know, if we need to take some action in a future time, we can. So with that, uh, we'll go ahead and open up for public comments. Does anybody have any public comments they want to address the council? And when you do, before I start the timer, please say, I know your name and address, but please say it for, for Todd.
Diana Allen, two zero one Blake Drive, Centerton. Uh, I don't, this isn't on the agenda, but it's just something that I've wondered about quite a bit. When I come to the meetings and I notice often how much land is annexed to Bentonville. So, and you don't have to explain it tonight. It might be for another meeting. But I would like more clarification on annexation. Are we annexed? Wow. Uh, are we annexing property into Centerton? Do we have any plans for that? How does, it seems like we have a lot of land going to somebody else. And I really, I don't understand how it works, so I'd like to see us annexed more if that's something we should do. Because you don't have to answer me tonight, but I, maybe next time, somebody could speak to it.
I'll respond her if that's okay, Bill.
Yeah, you're right.
Since I work for the city of Bentonville, I can tell you all of their annexations are voluntary. Bentonville doesn't do any, uh, forced annexations or referendum vote annexations. So, that's the only difference why their people are going to Bentonville versus Centerton. I can't tell you, but I just wanted to let you know from a standpoint that Bentonville doesn't go out and contact people. It's typically developers doing it willingly. Uh, so, I don't know. And maybe with part of what we're, one of the things we're looking at tonight might assist us with attracting people.
So like, when we have maps and oftentimes there's a little white circle or rectangular where somebody will say, that belongs to Bentonville, or it's sort of in the middle of Centerton. So I guess I don't understand how, I mean, so how would we go about annexing property to us?
Well, we, one, encouraging people by showing the benefits of coming into Centerton. Two, forced annexation, if we, if there's an enclave that we surround them on three or more sides, or a referendum vote like Rogers has done, which is, I think, really unpopular. Basically, you've got fifteen thousand people voting against the six people or ten people that own the property that, that we want to annex. So I think obviously we want to go with option one, show them what the benefits are being in Centerton.
So like when, um, Hawasi was annexed to Rabbit, was that a vote? I mean, how does, I don't really.
What they did there, there's an option where, I forget what the percentage is. Brian, do you know what the percentage of the number of people that own land?
Fifty percent of the majority.
Sign and say they want to be annexed, then everybody along that corridor was annexed because they didn't want to be part of Bella Vista, because Bella Vista was looking at doing a referendum vote to annex basically Hawasi and all those people said, nope, we're going to Rabbit.
I just, I just wonder if you're happy. Thank you.
A lot of them, uh, just one other thing, a lot of them are, are developments. So the, what we have, two or three annexations in the last year, three months.
And we've been coming here pretty, they have to finish here. They, they end up here. When they're done, we've been annexing quite a bit of property.
Okay.
If you want to, and I don't want to take your time, but why don't you contact me? We can sit down. I'll show you everything we've done.
All right.
Happy to. I'll show you the process. I'll show it all to you.
Thank you.
You can just walk across the back fence here.
That's right.
I'll be happy to. Anyone else? Yeah, no, I see her. I'm gonna skip my timer ready.
I want a question and answer. I just felt like.
Oh, no, no, we've been doing it quite a bit, so.
Hi, I'm Jenny Martin. I live at one thirty Napoleon Lane here in Centerton. I've been here about eighteen months or so. I just want to introduce myself and let you know of a new group that's formed very recently, in the last two to three weeks. A Facebook group at the moment, but we're getting together. We're planning a meet and mingle and it's called Centerton Seniors, age fifty-five plus. We're visiting area senior centers like Rabbit, Lowell, different places. We are on fire, find a place and have an opportunity for seniors in Centerton to get together, to connect, to have activities ongoing, special events. Just people who are independent. This is not for assisted living kind of situations, but it's just for people who are single or married, but would like to connect with other seniors in the area and have a place that we could get together. And Bill's working on this and we've been in contact and I just wanted to introduce myself and you know of other seniors, tell them to look online on the Facebook and join us. And we have a meet and mingle on the twenty-fifth at the Old City Hall. And we welcome anybody. It's gonna be nine to eleven in the morning. We'll have breakfast, maybe a fun game or two and just get to visit and chat and meet up. So I just want to introduce myself and let you know about this new group.
I saw your page. I don't turn fifty-five till April, so I got a couple of months.
Listen, we have seventy-nine or eighty adds up just tonight um, that we've gotten in just two to three weeks and we are really incredibly excited about it. And we're welcoming anybody fifty-five and older. Sorry, we're gonna turn down some younger ones, but if it's somebody that's married and they're fifty-five, but their spouse is younger, they're fine. You know.
That was the next question.
Trying to.
My wife's a little younger.
We're not trying to turn people away, but we just want some things that maybe either retired people or those who maybe are like part-time working or they, you know, a lot of, a lot of the seniors we're finding are needing to connect and just, you know, it's, it's good mental health. We want to have exercise programs, activities. So, thank you.
And I just want to add, I, I have, I have met Mrs. Martin. And I have offered their community room to them every day of the week. It's available Monday through Friday, every day except Friday morning. And then also she's gonna meet Saturday. I, I, you know, ready for her to use it, so we, we can work together for our space and then we're gonna talk later, so. Uh, anyone else? Public comment? One, two? All right, time to move on. And, and Diane, get with me. I want to show you, you know, what we're doing in the annexation process and everything, so. Fair enough?
Not tonight though.
No, no, not gonna, no, no, tonight, we're not. No. No, not tonight. All right. So, before, okay, before we start, Rabel's giving me the look. Uh, would someone like make a motion? Read ordinance twenty twenty-three zero eight, zero nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and resolutions twenty twenty-three zero five, zero six, zero seven, zero eight, zero nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen by title only.
Okay.
All right, roll call, sir.
Mr. Eland?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham?
Yeah, sure.
Justin Cowver?
Yes.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
All right. Would someone like make a motion, suspend the rules, required to read on three separate occasions? Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, zero nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
No move.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Eland?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham?
Yes, sir.
Justin Cowver?
Yes.
And Amy Rochette?
Yes.
All right. So first up, make sure I got it. I got it right, Brian? We did? Okay, I had to look, make sure I'm, felt like I missed something. All right. First up is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eight. Uh, we spoke about this at our last meeting and the council, uh, asked the Water and Sewer Commission to go back and reconsider or consider moving the Water and Sewer Commission up to five members. They went to their meeting. They made that recommendation to us to increase it to five. Uh, so that's what this ordinance is doing. It's taking from three members to five members. Um, does anybody have any questions on this?
How will those members be?
So what will happen? Well, I'll let Bob come up. It's easier. You gotta say your name and address. No, we know. We know you.
Yeah, the, which it is recommended we add two members. Our plan is to publicize what you approved it. We would, uh, make postings to our website, to our Facebook group, to other Facebook groups in the, uh, associated with Centerton. And we, we will also send a letter to each of churches that we've identified, asking that they announce to their congregation that there will be two, um, we're taking applications for two new members. The, I'm just thinking that. So, I've drawn up, drafted a timeline here that, uh, we will make the posting this week. Tomorrow, if you adopt the ordinance. Um, we would use a letter. The commission will act as a screening agent for the mayor. Uh, we will review the app. We will ask for a letter application, uh, which simply is accompanied by resume or written statement of education, work experience, and a brief statement as to why they want to serve. And we ask that they all be, uh, delivered to the office at Centerton Utilities by four P M on the seventeenth of March. Um, we will then, that will give us an opportunity to review them and act on in our regular meeting on the twenty-first of March. And we will, uh, identify, uh, people to be interviewed while we'll ask them to come to our meeting. And we'll make a referral to the mayor of recommendations. And we're not going to, we will not limit the recommendations to two. We will hopefully make however many we think are appropriate will be our recommendations to the mayor.
And they do have to be a resident of Centerton, right?
Yeah, the statute very clear. They must be qualified. Qualified elector of the city. That means they gotta be registered to vote. Yes.
Time limit as to how long lived in Centerton?
What?
Any time limit for how long they've lived in Centerton?
Nope. Nope. That's the only qualification stated in the, in the ordinance. It is that they must be a qualified.
So all the current board members are requirement that, uh, there's only reason to ask is since the water and sewer goes outside the city limits and it impacts people within the water and sewer district. I mean, why not look at somebody outside of the city limits but within the district because?
Well, um, yes, we have, we have a large, uh, water service area that is out, extends outside the boundaries of the city. It actually include parts of the other cities. And, uh, but the law says that for the city commission have to be a qualified elector. Uh, state law says that if you have more than twenty percent of your connections are outside of the city, then there will have to be a, what's called a non-resident advisory committee established with the commission. The attorney general opinion on that is that if they are residents of any other city, they're not considered to be, you know, those connections don't count. So we're only down about eight or nine percent of our connections or people who might, might possibly qualify. So we're only close to twenty. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions? State of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash zero eight. Norance, admitted certain municipal code, section, uh, ten point zero eight point zero three. Title Water Works and Sewer Commission Composition. I'm gonna make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eight. Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, sir.
Mr. Eland?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham?
Justin Cowver?
Yes.
Amy Rochette? Yes.
All right. Next is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero nine. Uh, I'm gonna explain this ordinance a little bit. Uh, so this is an ordinance initially rezoned in property from R three multifamily to R three two-family medium to high-density duplex. Uh, was the initial request. This property is located on D Street. Uh, this is a very small lot. You know, it's just just south of Cass Street on East Side Road. It used to be a trailer house there for folks who's lived here for quite a while. Uh, it's been a vacant lot. So this went through the planning commission. Uh, there were several comments, uh, public comments, uh, on this one. Uh, and I'll just kind of give you a brief summary of them. Uh, most of them were concerned with the word two-family because they're thinking this lot's only point one five acre. Now we're gonna put two families here and parking and all that. And, and that's a valid concern. Because this is a very small lot. And, and that was, you know, some of the comments, you know, that what's the ability to fit a duplex on the lot? The required parking spaces was a concern. But a lot of it was, like I said, just due to the two families. So they did vote for it. However, uh, our planning staff, uh, reached back out, did a little more checking. And, uh, it appears that, you know, for the zone, it had to be like ten thousand square foot. If I'm not mistaken, and this, this one, anyway, they went back and visited with the applicant. He came to the last planning meeting and requested this be, uh, rezoned to R three single family. Uh, and the planning commission, uh, voted to say, yeah, we're good with that. We recommended it at city council that way. So I know when I first wrote this, uh, I wrote it, we, we was looking at either R three duplex or R three single family. It was confusing and my staff sat me down and said, Bill, you're, you're confusing everybody. So I, I just want to give you a little backstory of how we got here. So the request uh, is for R three single family. And it'll fit within setbacks and, uh, you know, I, I think that, and they, they voted unanimous to, to send it forward. And at that meeting, we didn't have any further comments on it, so. Uh, I think that's all I have. And again, there's a map of the, of the property. And does anybody have any questions? State of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash zero nine. In ordinance to rezon certainly answered in the Centerton same limits belonging to HSK Homes from medium high-density multifamily residential R three M F to medium high-density single-family residential R three S F. So I'm gonna make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero nine.
Some of them.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Eland?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
One.
Keith Higginbotham?
Yes, sir.
Justin Cowver?
Yes.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
All right. Next is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten. Uh, this is accepting the final plan of Featherstone Village Phase Two subdivision. This is located Kimmel and Womack Roads. We do have the engineer, uh, Mr. Chavis on Zoom and also, uh, if I need to be here, yeah, or if we need him, so.
Only whatever, Jeff.
Jeff's here.
Big ol' words.
He's here if you have any questions, but, uh, and this came to the planning commission. They, they voted for unanimous. And this is phase two. You, you want to say a little bit about it since you're here? Uh, this brief?
I think we're pretty good.
Bonds are in order. Everything's done.
We've, we've got all of our bonds in. I mean, we're, uh, I think we're, we're just finished up a little bit of electrical and for whatever. But he was happy planning. Um, got our legislation all fired up, got it all working and oh, this, this phase went a whole lot easier than the first one, that's for sure, but um, I think we're, you know, as far as I know, we're, we're good. Unless there's something out there I don't know about, but we got, we got everything all taken care of and ready, ready to go.
What is your, so I think all of this was planned before, voted on before I got on the board. What is your total planned unit, uh, number there?
I don't remember exactly. That, that has changed three or four times. Um, I know in the, the, the overall, I think even with phase two, which is, or phase three, which is on the west side, we're, we're probably gonna be close to three hundred and fifty units.
I heard five hundred and I was thinking, oh.
No, I don't like, whatever, like we ever hit, we're talking five hundred, so.
Same, Amy.
No. So I can drive it. I think we started out at four hundred. By the time we got done with the P U D and all the green space and all that, we wound up somewhere in that three fifty-ish range.
This is Jake Chavis with Basin Associates, some of the engineer on that one. And Jeff's right, it's actually a little, little lower than that, about three hundred and thirty, three forty for this whole subdivision, Featherstone Phase one and two.
Okay.
These are just the two phases?
Are you talking about east side and west side, Jeff?
Uh, no, no, this is just Featherstone Phase one and two. We are be going to come to the planning commission here in the next couple of weeks with the Featherstone West. It's a, it's a different development. Um, just across the street with about the same number of units, but that's, that's in the future. Um, it'll, it'll come to planning commission here in the next few weeks.
The plot states three hundred and thirty-two lots.
How many?
Three hundred. That's for both phases.
Right.
One and two. So these, these two are lots, one thirty-nine through one, or three thirty-three. The difference of those is how many lots.
And phase, then Featherstone West, we're still working on, on that. We're getting exonerated P U D and so that should be something she coming to you guys pretty quick.
Any more questions? None? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Excuse me. State of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash one zero. In ordinance accepting the final subdivision plan of the Featherstone Village Phase Two subdivision. Creating residential lots one thirty-nine through three thirty-two and tracks M through T, State of Centerton, Section Three Township Nineteen North, Range Thirty-One West, Ben County, Arkansas. Make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten.
No move.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, sir.
Mr. Eland?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham?
That's right.
Justin Cowver?
Yes, sir.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
All right. Next is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven. Uh, this is reducing the number of folks on our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board from nine members down to seven. Any questions on this?
We just moving the numbers since we have the two resigning?
Two, yeah. And they're having a hard time getting people to come, so. I remember when you and I were on together, it used to be five. Then they updated a little bit and then, you know, so they said all seven. So, any questions? State of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash one one. In ordinance submitted certain municipal code, section, uh, twelve point one two point zero one. Title created for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. All right. So make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven.
I'm left.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Yep.
Roll call.
Mr. Eland? Darren Warren? Josie Reed?
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham?
Yes, sir.
Justin Cowherd?
Yes.
And Amy Rochette?
Yes.
All right, next is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twelve. This is accepting the final plat of Timber Ridge Phase Two. And uh, Ferdy's here, uh, he's, he's representing project. And this is on the end of Steeper Road, actually, you can see this project uh from Highway one oh two, where the new Harps is that we were talking about. At two seventy-nine and one oh two, it's back behind it. But you wanna say a little bit briefly about since you're here?
Yes, um, so this is fifty-six lot, single family subdivision, that's to the south of Steeper. And um, this is the final plan, we've. Put it in. The, the same as what was on the preliminary flat as far as the designer.
Anybody got questions for Ferdy?
Save surgeon ordinance number two thousand twenty-three day one, two, in ordinance accepting the final subdivision plat. Of the Timber Ridge Phase Two subdivision, creating revenue for lots sixty-three through nineteen and tracks A and B. City of Centertown, Section Thirty-two Township twenty north, Range thirty-one west, Benton County, Arkansas.
Someone like make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twelve. I'm moved. We have a motion, we have a second?
One second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Elon?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Keith Higgins bottom?
Yes, sir.
Justin Cowherd?
Yes, sir.
And Amy Rochette?
All right, next is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, and Matt's here if we have any questions on this. This is establishing fees for our newly created. Centered EMS service. We uh certainly want to have our fees, uh, you know, in our, in ordinance with them. Matt, you want to say just a little bit, bit about this since you're here?
Sure. Sure. The way we came up with these fees, we got with all the other cities that run ambulance services here in North Coast, Arkansas. And then we took those fees and we got with the billing company that we hired. And. So that's the way we come up with these numbers. Is that explained enough, or do you want to more?
It's good to be.
Yeah. Are these been pretty relative to the other cities?
Some of the other cities, Bentonville, for instance. The ambulance transport fee is a little bit lower, but they charge for each piece of equipment that they use. If it's. The monitors going to cost you more, innovation is going to cost you more, each drug costs you more. And so this was just easier talking to the billing company if we just did one number. And it more meets the guidelines to like Medicare, Medicaid and some insurance, so that's why we went here. But for the most part, when you balance them out, yes, they do.
Probably it's easier, I was gonna say probably easier for the insurance, but also. The person when they're reading their bill that they're, they just see that one.
This one.
Instead of.
What the difference is that ALS is just basically no advanced life support skills, so just kind of. If they fell and just needed their legs splint without any IVs or pain meds, they'd go to the hospital that way. The ALS one is if you use one to two. Um, ALS skills with just like a monitor and an IV, that's an ALS one. They had like um, they had. Where they use multiple drugs, multiple monitors, and I, that's when you get to the ALS two, so. And then. From everyone was that I've talked to, there's a few that was a little bit lower, but they all recommended that fifteen dollars. And the ones that weren't at fifteen dollars a mile are going to council to fix it because all the maintenance has went up on the trucks, they said that. Fifteen miles basically where you needed to be.
So insurance won't question it just being a flat rate versus itemizing all stuff that we.
But they said we'll get less questions because the itemizing thing, they said we wouldn't get any money for it all. Um, Medicare, you know, they pay a little bit less than what we're actually charging. And it's the. There's somewhere eleven or twelve dollars, I forget what it was, but we had to go through, besides this, we had to go with the billing company. And go through a whole phase, so like if they ask for assistance. We're, we're doing our assistance program since the hospital's already set up for it. They turn in for assistance with the hospital, whatever the hospital gives them, if it's, if the hospital writes it off, we write it off, if they only get twenty percent, thirty percent. They already had the system and the people, and so they, that's what the service or the billing service recommended, just go with what the hospital had. They have all the lawyers and everything to deal with us. Already in place. That's basically all I can tell you.
If you've ever been transported. By one of the other services that. Details the bill, you almost need someone like Matt or a paramedic or someone to explain the bill, cause it's, it can get kind of lengthy. This way is gonna be real cut and dried. You, you rode, you pay.
More questions for Matt? More questions on your ordinance? Go ahead, sir. Any more questions?
No, it's just on the uh outside city limits, it's showing negative seven fifty. So I just wanted to.
They should, yeah, we.
And I, it's. Just, I mean, I just didn't want to make sure that we weren't setting ourselves up for.
We'll, we'll fix that. And I think that, that's the way I got it, I'll, I'll fix it.
Yeah, I, I think it's script, there's a better thing.
Yeah.
We, we can fix it.
Yeah, it could be.
All right, save surgeon ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash one three, in ordinance to establish billing. For ambulance services provided both for inside and outside of the city uh limits of Centertown, Arkansas to create an emergency and for other purposes.
Misty, thanks for pointing that out. We'll get it. They get, they get a check, they get a check for writing, no. Okay. All right, so I like make most of the adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen with the correction.
I moved.
Motion, we have a second? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Elon?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Keith Higgins bottom?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cowherd?
Yes.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
Section two, the city council of the city of Centertown, Arkansas has determined that emergency is hereby found to exist. And this ordinance being necessary for the preservation of public peace, health and safety shall be in full force and effect. From and after its passage approval and publication.
Someone like make motion to adopt the emergency clause.
I'm moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Elon?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Keith Higgins bottom?
Yes, sir.
Justin Cowherd?
Yes.
And Amy Rochette?
Yes.
All right, I, I will bring Rob up for this next one. This is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fourteen. Uh, this is discussing building permits. And while he's on his way up here, it's, you know, we did get the email from uh, from a developer. And our staff, Rob, Rob can tell you who all met and what we decided, or once they decided.
Cause he didn't, I bit my tongue a while ago, so forgive me. I feel like I did. Did y'all have time to look this ordinance over and everything? Y'all have, let's just get to the questions, what questions do you have?
You want to tell who all met, cause I know it was you, Paul.
Lightning, Fire, Public Works, uh, Engineer Brian, um. I'm not forgetting. Utilities, you had. Um, this, this pretty much concerns the whole city.
I, I just have a comment that it's interesting that we haven't had this kind of situation happen. Prior to now.
Wouldn't mean.
While home and making. This exception, or not exception, but making this new ordinance, like this isn't, this situation hasn't come up before.
Well, it's come up before, they were told no.
And that was it?
But I've been a, this been.
Something to know, because we just came last planning meeting. They're, uh, uh, they were all planted lots over there, there was like three or four of them over there, right at our last planning meeting. But they were all filed on planted lots, utilities, you know, this is making some excitement for all that, so.
That's what I'm saying, this is a unique. And hasn't.
Yeah.
Well, because it's technically still not a legal law. And this city's actually seen issues before in the past. That's also the reason why the other cities that we drew from this actually have stipulation because. They didn't allow it either. And it's always been this city's long standing hills that we don't do that. You build homes until the subdivision's done and planted and recorded. At the county office where it actually has legal descriptions. Cause you and I can't go get a loan for a lot that don't exist. So, to me, it was always a. Common sense, no brainer. Uh, because so many things can go wrong. Uh, and I did speak with Lance at Bentonville about it. Uh, of course, and you know, he told me that was something they did a long time ago, and. I don't recommend doing it, it's, there's always too many issues. Um. So, so anyway, um. We got this put together, um, now the planning commission and the planning department still has their contingencies that they do. Which it's covered in the ordinance that they have to still abide by their stuff. So there's a few things that are not on this that's gonna be covered underneath their stuff. So. What, any questions?
Well, I guess probably since you've looked at it, planning's looked at it, buyers looked at it, engineering. And if y'all fall came to agreement, cause I know typically with, when it comes to model homes. People try to build them so quickly that have an adequate, adequate uh fire access. Uh, you know, just safety access, you know, getting an ambulance there and get people out, because even though it's model home, you still gotta think about. Structure fires or while they're building it, some of them off the roof and hurting themselves, so. I mean, if y'all have covered all those bases and y'all are.
That's why it's close proximity to an existing street. Whether it's paved or it's a dirt road or gravel road. It's gotta be existing that will actually carry the loads of. The fire trucks and the emergency vehicles, and that's also why it can't be located. You know, like in the middle of the subdivision. It's gotta be located to the closest. Preliminary, preliminary plat, buildable lot next to that road. We're not going into that subdivision. You're, if you were to do something like that, you know, I mean, you just, you're talking about so many problems with MS four compliance, safety hazards. I mean, I tell you, been there, done that, and this wasn't even, we didn't even do the homes. This was just throughout the development with injuries. Structure fires, we've had. New structure fires, right, Matt? Construction fires on final subdivisions that were done. One was arson and one was electrical. So, yeah, nothing can be rolled out, you know, but this biggest aspect of that is safety and. The city, you know, what can the city incur if stuff goes wrong? And like I said, you know, this city has had, where developments belly up. And they sit there for years.
Ask a question with, um. How to work this, um. How, how can we haven't done anything like this? Like months ago? Like what, what is new that's changed that brought this up?
Well, personally, I'd rather not do it. I just see nothing but problem, I personally don't think we should make any exception for it. You know, that's one of the deals that has to be done for to turn in a building permit, you have to turn in the legal description. You don't have a legal description because you don't have a lot that's done. Can't build on it, you can't go to bank and. So I want a construction loan for a lot that don't exist. So, I mean, for me. It's like when you emailed us the building permits for the, for the one thing that brought this up. No. Now, if I'd have known. A lot earlier. And then notified what was going on. Then I could have cut it off a lot quicker. But I didn't know till after the planning commission did all their stuff, which they couldn't do anymore. Which not for the building permits, because I control that. Um. You know, we've had subdivisions that, like I said, that went belly up, sat there. Actually, your street, Mr. Mayor, sat there for a long time, a lot of you, I don't know how many were here back in those days, you were, you were. You were, I remember that, those blue Dodge trucks, MP, I won't say their name. And then that subdivision went belly up, and there was people that got in, you know, in trouble with the law and stuff like that, and. You know, how many have seen the McMansions in Branson?
Yes.
There it was.
Still there, still there.
Well, the one all the way in, they tore those down.
Well, they're now doing a new development, but those had been there for over fifteen years because they built the things. No development. Roads, streets, no nothing.
Actually, the subdivision we're talking about. Building this in, wasn't that subdivision existed before, right?
Cities' parts.
Gavin's subdivision?
What, what do you mean?
Big guy, wasn't it there belonging to somebody else before? When Gavin bought it?
Yes, 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 I'm sorry, yeah.
I mean, what we're talking about.
Oh, yes, I forgot the first page, yeah, um, well, I mean, we're talking about. Anyone that was coming to do this, so it's not just that one, that's just the one that brought this up. Um, but. You gotta protect the public interest, the city's interest, where we're not gonna be on the hook. For a bunch of code enforcement issues, stuff like that, um, you never know what the economy's gonna do, right now, our economy is not that great. And I dealt with it when I did code enforcement, uh, early on. Where I worked for the city. Um. We dealt with a lot of issues, so yeah, that was, I'd forgot about that phase of that.
Heck of a time getting the roads insured because. The roads had been there so long that they no longer were warranted, basically.
Waterman shut off.
Subdivision, it already had been there.
Um, so I mean, you got stuff like that, you got some up by Charleux that.
Tammer on. All my kids learn how to drive there.
I mean, uh. There are parts of some, some others that sat there for years, and then they redid it, but we had abandoned lines and stuff. So, you, you, you gotta. Follow the right path, I mean. And I've said it before, and even now, I'm, I'm dealing with things even after subdivisions are final planted. I ended up dealing with issues to where I can't issue permits because of hazards. I just happened on a recent subdivision. You know, and uh. Yeah, which one I'm talking about? But uh, I still have a release permits in it because we still got a little bit of a hazard that they're gonna have to comply with. And the sad part is on that one particular. They knew it. They never disclosed it to anybody with the city about what was going on. And I found out afterwards from the gas company. And a man got his gas line cut off, he had no heat. Don't think he still does now, unless he got propane, so. You know, and they knew it the whole time, they never disclosed it in final plan, never did nothing. Let it go through and everything, and then get stuck with it.
If the model home gets built. And then the subdivision does go belly up, there's no way to sell the house.
No, what we'll do is what uh, we have done in the past along with structures. After it's set so long, we'll nuisance it and bait it. We'll file papers work on it, like we've done other structures. As long as the feds don't own it, is it the feds own it, well. We're just on luck, which we had in the, in the fallout in early two thousands. There was a lot of those houses that we had that. Had to get remediated and just completely redone, we'll, we'll tear it down.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the proper way to do it is to do a lot split. And then build the house.
Right, well, that was why I said that suggestion, just do this thing as a standalone parcel. In that way, I mean, have you all seen emails, I mean, it's, it's done. Actual. Lot that can be planted. And then, then it's over with. You know?
Since I've been out of it for a while, and you said you talked to Lance, this Bentonville required the subdivision to be substantially complete. Before they allow for a model home.
Yeah, he just said it was something that they did a long time ago, and I think if you look at the ordinance that y'all had on yours, I think it was like ninety. And it was when the planning was over the building department, which is not the case anymore. And he said. No, if you can't get away, don't do it, don't do it, he said, there's just too many things and stipulations that have to be met. And it's just, it's, it's just a real pain.
It's for. Defined or required, you know, the subdivision to sixty percent complete, seventy percent complete, that way. Streets in, there's roads in, urban gutter, or something there for a hard surface for emergency vehicles. The drive on, if it's right on the edge next to. Developed street.
Well, the thing on this is that, you know, this, if you all agree to this, this is just a model home. And it's not. Somebody's like, well, I wanna go do this too, now. Because in that stipulation, the, have to be the owner, has to be the same, same owner, same property owner. Um, so, because once you start down this path. Could be an ugly path, so we're, this is only for this, and like I said, oh, I. And I guarantee you something's probably gonna go wrong, and we'll have to come back to it.
But model home is gonna be right there on Walters Road, right?
For this one, supposed to be right there off the corner. For this one, supposed to be right there off the corner.
So. In the event of a fire. At that model home, Walters Road is gonna be closed.
Provided nothing else happens.
Well, no, that, but that's what I'm saying. I mean, you're looking at Walters Road as, you ask anybody that lives over there, it's become a. A pretty heavily traveled road. So you're shutting down a major.
Shut down Walters to hide stuff, yeah. But again, this is, this is not just about that one. You guys gotta remember, this is about any of these, if you pass this, anybody that wants to do this in a subdivision. Who can meet the planning requirements under conditional use and these requirements are able to pull a permit.
Anything happen, they're probably gonna come down anyway. Yeah, get, yeah, get water and stuff, or even a big sky, I'm sure we would.
Well, maybe they close seventy-two for an overturned car. I mean, sometimes.
Yeah, they have to. We could detour through Orchard Park. They can.
They can happen all that.
They can do, they can detour.
You know. Play for the, oh, for the best plan for the one. You got your.
Yeah, okay, we'll make sure you get your question answered. Have you got anything else for Rob? And I will tell you, I, and it was in your email. I did tell Gavin I would give him a copy of this after we had it reviewed and he reviewed it. I did send it to Gavin on Saturday. And I've not heard anything back. So he, he was made aware of this, of what we're getting ready to. Post tonight. So he has.
Most of this was pulled from favorable. They will have a lot more than they'll live in. But I added a lot more stuff into it.
What's your. Pretty honest recommendation?
I wouldn't do it. I told you a while ago, I wouldn't do it. That's just my thing. I'm doing this, if you all wanna do it. You do it, but if something else happens, you can live with it. Like I said, you've been here long enough, you've seen these things go south. It's not about this subdivision, it's about any of them, if we do this, that can happen, especially in today's times.
It's an easy fix, just a lot split.
Right.
I wish we were trying to do all off. That's, that's what we were trying to do.
Will you wait till the subdivision is actually done?
At least.
Well, done.
Well, it's just done. Towards release, it can be planted.
Well, when it gets filed at the reporter's office, then it becomes legal documentation and it becomes legal lots with you and I can purchase. And I'm sorry, I don't know any bank. I can go to the bank, say, give me a little, a minute. Now, you might have it with some other stuff that you have. But. And you'll give you something that ain't actually, that don't exist. You don't. But that's up to you all.
There's no nine-one-one. Uh, listing either, not till it's planted.
Well. Matt can get ways around that. But that could potentially be confusing to some people if they're like. Where's that at? But we have to be addressed off of. Walters, right?
With the one that we're dealing with right now. It's gonna have an address off Walters and then whatever the subdivision's final, then the flat will change, or the address will change. To.
Front Street.
Whatever street it's on.
I think that one question. Benton County Assessor's Office. How do they assess this property? When an aquatic substitution?
So it's a little bit of a block. When the tax man come and he's out right now. He can't assess that property until it's recorded at recorder's office.
He would, he would.
That's just, it, I mean, that's just part of the.
He wouldn't add that, he wouldn't add that structure to the, the total parcel?
Well, he would probably have to.
Yeah, that's how you would probably assess it.
Because that's the only existing one is the parcel right now.
Well, I mean, we got places all over the county that has like a house and twenty acres. And this would be kind of the same thing, right? A house and whatever the acreage is of that, of one parcel. Am I right, or am I thinking wrong, or?
Well, I mean, just.
It would, it would show an improvement on that. So. I think that's what would happen.
It's on that parcel.
Did it show improvement on that parcel? Yes.
Yeah.
Well, you put storage. Just by those two, so.
And that's the only way that any of them would have to, any of these would go.
That's a good question. You think Keith?
Counsel.
I can go vote on that, decide that way.
Y'all any more questions?
I guess what is the benefit of having this ordinance?
It's not for the city.
Okay.
It is not for the city.
City, so.
There's no benefit to the city for this. This is actually a burdensome for us.
Okay.
And cumbersome. My opinion, I don't think anybody would disagree about that.
Save certain ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash one four. In order to minisert in municipal code, section eleven point two zero point zero four, I don't issuance of permits.
Here we go. So I would like to make a motion to adopt. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fourteen. Offer it again. Does someone like make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fourteen? Hey, third final time, they would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fourteen. Okay, it fails. Right, Brian?
Fails for one second, yeah.
Okay, we didn't even get it first.
Oh, it's okay.
Okay. All right, it failed. Edgar. I'll bring Edgar up here, we're gonna buy some equipment now. So we're done with ordinances, thank you. Uh, next is resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero five. This is purchasing a. Crack seal trailer. That was about.
Good evening, council, hope you guys are doing well. Happy Valentine's Day. I know this is not the thing you guys wanted, but welcome. Oh, so this is a crack.
That's why we're here.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes. So, um, this main thing about this machine is that we're a little bit over budget on it. We did, uh, budget for it, it was at fifty thousand. So we, uh, we did take two bids for it. One sitting around sixty thousand, the other one sitting at fifty-six. The one that's sixty thousand is available right now as we speak. However, we're going with the one. Fifty-six, which, um. If, if we were to vote for that one, which is the one we're leaning for, uh, we would order it per se tomorrow. And it wouldn't be ready till May, which is perfect because we don't need it at the moment till the weather kind of gets a little bit better. Uh, so that's mainly the main, our main concern is that, that it's just a little bit over budget. But we're offsetting the cost because we did purchase the. Uh, system power works where Granton did purchase a vehicle for four, uh, for thirty-five thousand, which was a little bit higher. We did, well, maybe for, I think we put in the budget about forty-five or fifty for his truck, so. We already saved fifteen grand off, off his truck, so we're kind of balancing now off of that. So that's the main thing, this, the one that we're going for. It is, uh, the current crack seal machine we have, that's take about thirty minutes, it only takes two blocks to, uh. For, uh, crack seal and it's relatively slow and it's old outdated. This one, it's pretty much crank and it goes and, uh. Pull behind, the guys already went to demo it, uh, to grab it, I believe. So they're pretty pleased and, uh. But that's what we have so far. I didn't bring the pictures, but I think in the.
They're inside there.
Yeah.
And it's quotes and everything's in there.
Some are.
And Misty, I have in the resolution, uh, the amount that they want to spend, fifty-six.
Even if we went with the one that's available right now, it's four thousand dollars more expensive than the one we're willing to wait for till May.
Anybody got any questions, Edgar?
And we did have this in the budget?
Yes, we did. We were at fifty grand instead of fifty-six or sixty like this one is. Like I said, we are offsetting by the saving on, uh, Anthony's truck, so. We'll, we'll be okay so far.
You said this was brand new?
Mm-hmm.
They have used ones? I'm just.
Yes, they, they do, but, uh. They're not reliable.
How long will this last? How many seasons?
If we took well care of it, you know. Five years, if not more, I can grant you that. So, the, these guys take care of the new equipment very well. They do the regular maintenance, we do our own maintenance and they keep a, a log of it all, so. Pretty pleased with how they even keep their trucks inside, so this machine will not be the exception.
So our guys are, so you guys, they'll, they do their own maintenance on this?
On all of our equipment. Other than if it's, you know, specialized items, then we'll, we'll outsource it. And the biggest thing about this crack seal machine is that. The guys are out of Cersei, Arkansas. So, uh, I did not know when we first, uh, getting this stuff, uh, Jake told me, hey, this is out of Cersei, it's what Hanner. Enterprise is, and I've dealt with him in the pa, in the past, uh, with Fort Smith. So we purchased a lot of equipment and I'm actually very pleased with them because they are able to come here and, and service it. And they will, if it's something minor, they'll mail it to you and it's easy fix. Overall, I've had good experiences with them.
Do we got any more questions, Edgar?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Back in a minute.
Yeah, we'll be back.
He'll be back.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash zero five, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk. As representatives of the city of Centurion, Arkansas, to enter into a purchase agreement with. Einar, is that correct, Justin?
Einar?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Utility Products Incorporated, Cersei, Arkansas, for the purchase of a crack seal trailer.
We make motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero five. Well, man, we got a motion.
Hey, hey, Bill, hold on. I, I got pushed back as an attendee. Hey, question for you, Edgar, when's the last time we bought one of these?
You can hear me, bud.
Yeah, come on, he can hear you.
I can hear him.
This is the first new one. This is not equipment, it's not something we wanna continue, we wanna purchase used. So we've never heard of the city, a new one.
No, I, I think I'm just trying to understand when we say we're buying something new and we're saying, you know, the future is. Infinite when we get something new. I'm just trying to understand when, how long the last one last, that was it.
This one's been about six years we've had it used, so we don't, I don't know what the previous history of it was, but we had it in our, about six years.
Oh, used, it was six years?
Yeah, we had it in our possession. Now, we didn't use it because we actually purchased it and it wasn't completely running.
So the new one probably would last even longer than, right?
Yes, ma'am. Based on what, uh, Edgar said, we, he, he is very good at maintaining, uh, equipment, so it can. It could last ten years.
Right.
One of the pieces of equipment, you just never know.
Right, but if we're buying it new and we're, we have our own maintenance, it'll probably last longer than a used one.
Yeah, probably, it's probably ten years, probably, I would guess.
And just to speak on that, I think of previous council meeting, we did. Talk about instead of buying used equipment, buy a new one and just make sure that it's well taken care of. So that's also part of it while we continue buying old equipment because the past, we've had to put more in, that they're really. Uh, for standing one.
And Anthony, if I'm not mistaken, I was down there one time and. And that machine was in the, in the shop. And it was having to be completely worked because if I'm not mistaken, somebody put something in there that wasn't supposed to be in there or.
No, just the maintenance that we have to bring in, you know, for the, uh, that's some of the issues with the older machines. I don't, I'm not an expert with these type of machines, but that's some of it. We have to bring it in the shop and. Um, some of it was left out. Um, there was that issue, so it's been sort of fine. It took a while for us to maintain that equipment and. We get it out. Some of it was because of what we, how we got it. Um, and I don't know all specific details, but we do bring it in to personally bring it out of attention. And it's just, I, I don't know what the previous conditions were.
Next. This is all one of these. Propane, so that may be a reason.
Yeah, this meeting.
So we have a piece of thing, uh, searching their facility.
Justin, that answer your question? I think he said yes. I heard he.
Yeah, yes, it answered my question, though, all good.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, did you read it by title?
I did.
Keith gave us a motion.
Okay, he gave his motion to.
I'll, I'll.
You broke up. You say you'll second it, Justin?
I'll.
Break it up.
I'll second.
Okay, Misty second. Justin chugged it on too, so.
That's what it did to me last month.
Yeah, I was breaking up. All right. Real call, sir.
Mister Elam?
Yes.
Aaron Warren?
Yes.
Jesse Reed?
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham?
Yes, sir.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
And Justin Cowker.
Well, there.
Let me see. He popped off, like, wow, or jumped. I show there. He's there. Okay, we'll move on. Uh, all right, these next two resolutions. Uh, this first one is, are, basically they're interlocal agreements with. For animal control services, one's for the city of Hyphol. The other one's for the city of Cave Springs. We've had agreements with both these cities for, for a very long time. Uh, I think the captain was here, if we need, have any questions, but we get very few dogs. But, but we do get a few, we get, I think last year, I think Jeremy told me we got. You know, three or four from Cave Springs and about the same from Hyphol. But we do, you know, if they need a place to bring them, we do take them. Uh, the fees, it's, it's one hundred dollars per dog. Uh, just like we are charging Bentonville, that, that's the only fee. And Bentonville is leaving us the end of the month. So they'll be able to handle this just fine, uh. And on the first one with Hyphol, that's, they're both actually going to their city councils this month. Uh, I think Hyphol's is, is gone, the, it might have already been. Uh, because they had to have their council approve a, a resolution also. Uh, for this and then, uh, Kaye Springs told me, I talked to the mayor this the other day, it'll be going the end of the month. So, anybody have any questions on the first one, resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero six, the agreement with Hyphol?
Is this? Is this just for like the year and then the next year we'll do another one, or does it say on here?
I thought it was two years, let me see. Good question. Right, what we say?
Two-year term beginning for today.
Yeah, two years.
Automatically renegotiate every second year.
Every two.
Last terminated, ran by the party with sixty days notice.
And like I said, we've had good relationships with both, so. Any more questions? That was a good question. I, I thought I read two years.
See it on here, so that's why I was.
You could look at paragraph four of the agreement.
Yeah, oh.
Uh, if you look at the second or third line.
It's up there too, you know, the screen, if you, either way.
Which is term of agreement.
Two years, begin today.
Oh, on the actual agreement, gotcha. I was looking on the resolution.
Oh, that's fine, yeah, no, that's a good question. It's up there for you.
Gotcha, okay.
All right. Did I get your question answered? Okay. Anybody else? Counselor.
All right, resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash zero six. A resolution approving an interlocal, uh, cooperation agreement between the state of Centurion, Arkansas and the city of Hyphol, Arkansas. Regarding animal control services.
Someone like make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero six.
I'm in.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, sir.
Mister Elam?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Jesse Reed?
Yes.
Higginbotham?
Yes, sir.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
Justin Cowker.
Is he a panelist or a?
Well, he dropped off and he's back again. Hold on, I gotta move it over. Yeah, he dropped that. It's okay, he dropped off. I had to put it back over. He should be over there in a second. All right, Justin, it's your turn to vote.
Hi, yes, I, listen, I keep seeing the bandwidth at the city hall and the internet connection's running lag, so just, just as a heads up for next time. Yeah, yes.
Okay, thanks. All right, next is ordinance, or resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero seven. Uh, same thing, this is the agreement with, with, uh, Kaye Springs. Anybody have any questions on this? Counselor.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven. A resolution approving in, interlocal, uh, cooperation agreement between the state of Centurion, Arkansas and the city of Cave Springs, Arkansas. Regarding animal control services.
Number eight, motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero seven.
Well, man.
We have a motion, we have a second? All right, we have a second. Roll call, sir.
Mister Elam? Darren Warren?
Yes.
Jesse Reed?
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham?
Yes, sir.
Justin Cowker?[1796.34]
Yes.
And Amy Rochette?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, does that term start today?
Yes.
In the agreement, it says February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll fix that. Governors are, let me fix that one, is that on the?
That it's on the case.
Exactly, I thought somebody said. Yep, I'll fix it. That's easy.
As far as we're concerned, it, it goes into effect today, but it won't go into effect until the other city.
Yeah, the other city has to sign up, yeah, I'll fix it and send it to them.
Get the right year.
I, I will get it right. All right, so I see Alan's smile face up here, so he's got the next three. Uh, smile, smile face. So I'll, this first one is resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero eight. This is agreement with C, all three is your agreement with CEI, the next three. The first one's for professional services, I'll let Alan kind of speak about it.
Something I brought up. January, probably December is wanting to pre-qualify number of engineering firms, so if we have small projects. We can just assign them to them, so we, it's drastically expedite the process, so we don't have to go through. Advertising, getting bids, negotiating contract, go, I can just go right into. Based who I know who has the time, say, can you do it, what cost, and then assign a cost to, or assign the project to engineering firms. First ones with CEI to have that set up, um. There's two other engineering firms later today for Garver and half to also have those agreements, so would you. Agree to, or agree to the, um. If we have project needs to sign them and two of them. Or CEI that we're gonna do as well right after this, so.
Okay, all right, anybody got any questions for Alan?
Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash zero eight, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk. As representatives of the city of Centers in Arkansas to enter into an agreement with CEI Engineering Associates Incorporated, Bentonville, Arkansas. Services for specific projects in the city of Centers in Arkansas.
Some may vote to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero eight. Motion, we have a second?
Yes.
Your second, I have both of you at the same time.
With everyone.
You, you pick, pick one, Todd.
Ladies first.
Ladies first, okay, roll call.
Mister Elam?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Jesse Reed?
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham?
Yes, sir.
Justin Cowger?
Yes, sir.
And Amy Rochette?
Yes.
All right, next is resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine with CEI. Uh, this is for Safe Routes to School project we're working on, I'll let Alan speak about it.
This is the first task order for CEI, it's, they have a person, the person them, there's a right-of-way acquisition specialist. So we have a project going on, the ad sidewalks right away to get to Bentonville West. So are you eager to start on this project? But we really can't start doing anything until we have the right-of-way, so this assigns that specialist to help. Get the surveys done, the descriptions, are those going for that? Um, it won't include any kind of appraisals if we need that, we can do that without their help.
Any quick question? And thi- this is a sidewalk project we're working on, just so you know, it's on Gammel Road from Seba to Bliss and then from Bliss. To D Street. And then also if there's anybody left, we're gonna do something on Seba. Seba Road itself up by West High School, just gotta see how the funds go. And this is a grant actually we got in two thousand sixteen, uh, for Safe Routes to School. Uh, apparently the right-of-way wasn't acquired or we just have some, so these folks will help us get that.
Well, right away, we're missing.
We're missing some chunks of it, so. No questions? No questions?
Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash zero nine, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk as representatives of the city of Centers in Arkansas. To enter to an agreement with CEI Engineering Associates Incorporated, Bentonville, Arkansas for Safe Routes to School right-of-way services. In the city of Centers in Arkansas.
So I'm gonna make motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine. Come on, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Keith. Roll call.
Mister Elam?
Excuse me.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Jesse Reed?
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham?
Yes, sir.
Justin Cowger?
Yes, sir.
And Amy Rochette?
Yes.
All right. And our last resolution is twenty twenty-three dash ten, this is also a CEI, this talks about flood review services, Alan.
This is the second one, that's where, there's services that CEI provides and we need, the new part of it is. Um, we can flip to that next one.
One, ten?
You just go to the taskbar itself.
Not there?
Yeah, the community rating systems, how, why we already. They, uh, do the flood size and do the permitting. Part of that, we need them to keep doing that, and the other ones for, as we need them to do. Reviews on certain projects as they come up. Um, so these are all based in the hourly rates for those, so this is kind of continuing what they're already doing for the next count, two calendar years.
We will use them for any flood type. We use in the, in the city as needed?
As needed, we can contract them to help review and go over some of those. Um, I'm still not tested and certified to be the flood lane management manager. Um, so kind of help with that consultation they've done, and there's some open projects they're still working on. So we need to kind of keep that service going through, and that's really the goal for this, and then the CRS system itself. Is something that we would do, they would be doing anyway, so these are all hourly ones not to exceed.
And this will help, because I know we've had some flood review, flood plain stuff in the last few months come up. They will help with that?
Yes, as we do.
Okay. The second. That area?
Yeah, because, um, we got that, so I've finished going over that, or even then if we need questions, we can bring them in as well. What's the problem there, since they don't start it in a way until we ask them to. And that's basically hourly rates, that's part of this task order.
When do you anticipate on being fully, uh, uh, certified on that?
Uh, depends, well, probably starting to slow down a little bit with interest rates, everything else in the weather. So if I have time to get all the classes done and test sooner rather than later this year, but. When exactly that is, I don't know. I don't even know if that's our on-demand or only at twice a year.
Yeah, hey, Bill, is that something that we, I know we've talked about continued education before, that's something probably we need to just think about in the future and, and supporting, right? I think that's a saving to the city and, uh, you know, taking care of someone who wants to further their learning, so good, good work there.
Yeah, we've been supporting, yes.
We currently have nine or eight with the CRS, because it's typically pretty difficult to get.
Four or nine, we have CRS, um. I have coming up. Um, if they're gonna meet with us, it's my team. Her meeting to go. Uh, this is our five year. This city. I am a certified flood plane manager. That's my certified. What CEI helps with is like when they have to do. Um. Like a no rise, or justify that, you know, they do a flood analysis. CEI can look at that analysis and determine whether it's. Good, there's any impact. Then also therefore while we were in a, in a flood. For the CRS, there's a lot to it, it's like maybe the minus O rating or. There's a lot of work included and wow, they were like, we were short. I think a couple hundred points from the next level. And it's, it, we found that it's actually easier lining and you're doing things to mitigate that.
It's a benefit to our citizens if we, so a nine's a five percent discount on the flood insurance, we get to an eight, it's a ten, but. Really, when you start looking at going past that eight, the city really has started spending a lot of money to. And get all the necessary points. You want to see a detailed CRS flood plane manual, so. They'll send you three. Six inch thick, I mean, like these monstrous binders, because they are. For a reason, the whole city.
It's like substantial.
Okay.
That's a question for my learning surfaces, so is it normal then for cities to. Have, um, an engineering firm work with flood plane managers then? Is it like? I don't know if I'm explaining that right, because these prices are, they're pricey, right? But if we have like Lorraine as a flood plane manager. Like, is it normal to work with an engineering firm? I don't know if that makes sense.
Yes, there's firms out there that have.
Okay. So can I ask, I'm gonna ask another dumb question, sorry. What is the purpose of a flood plane manager? Um, in a firm, and the difference between a firm? Or is there, or?
Having an engineer to review the flood analysis that it sometimes require.
And, and a man, and you guys can't do that at your level, is that?
I can, maybe Alan can because he's an engineer.
Gotcha, okay.
An engineer prepares the, the study. And it's just like the drainage, like a drainage report for a aid development. Alan reviews that drainage analysis for that, so it's the same thing like for flood.
Perfection, okay.
Heck, whereas models, CEI can look at that and determine whether.
Okay, so when you get to speed and get your certification or whatever, then the city wouldn't have to use. Uh, outsourcing, right?
Possibly it all depends on how much of it, yeah, we're gonna do it like that.
There's a lot of, okay.
Hey, I didn't hear, when's that expected, when, when's she expected to be certified?
I've seen, uh, this year sometime.
Okay.
Might, might get that, but.
There's a lot of.
If there's. Or anything else, yeah, if. You know, if I'm doing other things, I can do so much, send it there just so we keep everything going, so it take me too long to do that and then get behind with the rest. It's, you know, which we want to get to when it gets to that, but, so I honestly don't know when they'll be done. But also, taskbars, the big thing I look at is that these are all hourly not to exceed. So I mean, right now, here's what we're set up for, you know. We might only hit five percent of that total thing if we need to go to consult and get stuff like that. Um, that's the convenient part of it, so.
I think it would be good to set some, some deadlines on when we're gonna get certified though, instead of just having a floating date, like, like we've had in the past and several other things. So we can kind of understand when we're gonna get to that point, that would be great.
That I have no idea when they test. If it's certain months, uh, but.
It's a place for you to go and see when.
I said, I don't know when I go to actually test to them, because I know there's a bunch of classes and I take beforehand before I can even take a test.
Yeah, I, I respect that, I, I just think as a, as a, as a council member, you know, it's easy for us to sit there and write a check. It, it, having the dates in line and being able to understand. What that looks like to be financially responsible for the city is also, you know, a priority too, so I think that would be great for Lorraine and, and you to understand that. And, and let us know how we can support in whatever way, because we appreciate all you do.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to put a deadline, I'm gonna go real loose and say I'll do it by twenty-four.
Well, you're also beholden to when they offer.
The tests and everything else, and when I can get the classes. And then I know, like, Anthony wants to take it, right, so there's, trying to get all this set up and going, but if you want to put a firm deadline. I'm gonna err way on the side of caution.
Yeah, hey, erring on the side of caution is better than just saying, hey, I'm gonna do it, not having an idea when it's gonna be.
The other thing is, is do you put everything that you've got on your plate on hold to do this, or do you do what the city hired you to do? And hope to get to the rest?
Yes.
The answer is yes.
All good, doesn't.
Eat that, I, listen, I understand where you're coming from on that, but it's also again. Do we just want to keep outsourcing everything around here, do we want to actually have people that are gonna do the job? After it being certified, I mean, I think that's also a, you know, legit discussion of. We want to support continued education, we did a salary study last year to support that and say, hey, we want our employees to grow. I, I think that that's, you know, so- something we need to look at, just saying, hey, we want to be certified and not having an idea where we're going, I mean, how, how does that help?
Wait a minute, I'm certified, but there are certain things that you still need an engineer for. Plus, I still have to take on this job while I'm doing all my other work. So there, I'm juggling too, everyone is juggling in this city, multiple jobs.
To- totally agree, Lorraine, and I, I would also say that's why we invested money in your solutions that you requested to help streamline your job. Which still has not rolled out, so I think that's just something that, that we want to make note of, that's all I'm saying.
So I was a certified flood plane manager and I will tell you that you need an engineer also. When we require, if someone is developing in a flood way, we tell them we want a no rise certificate. When I did that at the city of Bentonville and all that detailed information come in. I got an engineer to review it. Even though I was the city's flood plane manager, because that is a detailed report. Well, if that helps y'all out any, and having somebody that will be able to assist Alan, if he can't get to it with this resolution. To have CEI do some of this stuff will be nice.
And I'm just, I have no idea what flood plane engineers doing, so that's why I'm asking these questions from my own knowledge. Because I'm not as knowledgeable as some of these other people, so I'm just asking questions.
Anything for the certification much yet, other than barely start, so. But reading the no rise, stuff like that, that's where, yeah, I understand what Justin's saying, me, like I said, I am an engineer, I can read them. Just haven't gotten to them yet.
Just because he hasn't, doesn't have the certification, doesn't mean he can't do the job. And of course, we have Lorraine also, so I mean, I don't know why we're. Be bailing up on certification, 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 certification.
Where I was naturally certified.
Any more questions? We get them all answered?
Yeah, I don't think we were beating up on you, Alan, sorry, I'm just asking questions.
Fine.
It's a lot of money, so I'm just asking, here I understand.
That's it, I'm worried about it.
Okay. You have anything else, Alan?
No.
I have a bag, so I, I'll go too far.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash one zero, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk as representatives of the city of Centers in Arkansas to enter to an agreement with CEI Engineering. Associates Incorporated, Bentonville, Arkansas for flood review services for the city of Centers in Arkansas.
So I'm gonna make motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten.
Yeah.
Second by Amy. Roll call.
Mister Elam?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Jesse Reed?
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham?
Yes, sir.
Justin Cowger?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Amy Rochette? Yes.
Hang on. Okay, so I'll make sure he was still there. All right, next is resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven. Uh, this is, uh, I'm gonna bring up, uh. John Newberry, he is the director of McCounty, McDonald County Chamber of Commerce. And we've had conversations in the past about needing someone to help us with economic development. And also possibly starting a chamber, and so we've reached out to, uh, John. Or, you know, and had some conversations, and he feel like he can provide those services, which is agreement in the Dropbox. He's also provided each of us a little slide presentation, just that I don't have a slide, I have one here for you, but I don't have it where I can put it on the screen. So. Anyway, so if you want to refer to this.
Um.
I can hold up to my camera and.
No, I just. I'll wait till the end.
Okay, all right, so I'm gonna turn it over to you.
All right, well, it's interesting, you know, we started this conversation a few months ago, kind of by accident, but. Um, it, it was very intriguing when I was meeting with a few of the people from Centertown, we were talking about. Chambers, economic development, things like that, and. You know, just looked at that and I made a proposal to him and, you know, but, but I think I want to, instead of, you have all the, you have the outline in front of you. So I'm not gonna go over that so much, you have that, I want to relay a situation we had years ago, that kind of. I guess it kind of conveys where I'm coming from. And when I was in Ottawa, Illinois, uh, I've been there. And I, you know, through my job, I was involved with the chamber, economic development, so forth, and we were on the shortlist for a major corporation to come in. A hundred and fifty job facility there in Ottawa. It was one hundred and fifty job facility there in Ottawa, Illinois, just outside of Ottawa. And we're on the shortlist, final three, and they said, you know, over the next month. You know, we'll we'll let you know, but we send a team out to kind of tour the town and take a look at things. And that's really all we heard. Month went by, two months went by, and and then they announced the winner, and it wasn't us. And so I, me being the inquisitive person. I I called them up and after about fifteen phone calls of trying to get ahold of the right person. I finally got ahold of the person and I asked him a question, I said, you know. Why, what what could Ottawa do better to in the future, so we don't get, you know, so we don't fail again? And, you know, he pointed out some of the good things that were going on, but he said, you know, we sent our team to Ottawa. And they they drove in, this company was from Detroit, so they drove over. And uh, they got there about three o'clock, checked into the hotel. And figured they'd go downtown about five o'clock. And so they popped in their car, drove downtown, wasn't that far away from the hotel, and everything was closed. And there was really not a lot of eating places, and he said, they just packed their bags and drove off. Because in there, and when corporations look for economic development, they look for communities to settle in, they want unique. They want a vibrant downtown, but downtown is is kind of like the heart of the heartbeat of your communities. If you don't have a vibrant downtown, you're really missing out on a lot of economic development. And so from that point on, for me, it was like lights went on. I started writing the column, building Main Street, not Wall Street and things like that, and we actually moved to Oklahoma for a few years, and I was involved with Main Streets Chambers there. And at sixty-three, we figured, you know, COVID hit, we can live wherever we want, we honeymoon in the Ozarks, so we figured we're gonna move over to the Ozarks. So we moved over here, um, and I was consulting with communities, you know, they were, I I wrote the column, like I said, building Main Street, not Wall Street. And it's carried in about sixty or seventy papers around the country, and I started getting calls. And they said, you know, I kind of like the philosophy of what you're writing about, what, you know, can you come, you know, talk to our chamber, talk to our city or whatever, and so. This led to that, and I ended up doing a lot of consulting. And so, like I said, we moved to to this this region. And um, the McDonald County Chair Chair of the Chamber Board of there approached me and. Asking if I wanted to run their chamber, and I really told them, no, I had no desire to run a chamber. And uh, but he kept asking, and after about three months, I accepted it on the terms that I can do it part time. And that we kind of do it my way. Um, and when I say my way, it's not my way or the highway, but it needs to be an effort that's collaborative and. You know, but it needs to be the right steps, and so we've had great success there. Um, in in the six months I've been doing that there, um, they doubled membership, they doubled the revenue and economic development, people are calling. You know, you might say it's kind of a natural thing with five forty-five or forty-nine opening up and things like that, and that is, some of that probably isn't very natural, but. The the approach that I take is, you you need to be unique in your economic development. Everybody wants people to move to their town. Uh, and, you know, roofrooftops are a huge asset, which you have plenty of Centerton. Freeway is a huge need for a lot of these companies. Um, air travel, which obviously you that you're very, very well situated for that. Rail travel is is, I mean, air, road and rail are, and if you have waterways, that's great too, but you don't really need that. So, so you're competing with a lot of people, a lot of communities that have a lot of these resources. So how do you stand out above that? How do you make people want to come to Centerton and and set up shop, so to speak? And, you know, I know that this is a bad word to use in Centerton. But a lot of people from outside of Centerton look at Centerton as kind of bedroom community to the other megalopolis over, you know, Bentonville, Rogers, you know, all sorts of things, and it doesn't need to be that way. You know, and and it's a great example of other people outside of your community telling you who you are. And my whole point is the community needs to be, build their own vision and their own brand and tell the people who they are. And tell the people that are saying, you know, and and spread that message far and wide. And that's kind of what that proposal does. It's 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 an idea of, you know, you working through a chamber, because quite frankly, a chamber is probably in a community this size. It's probably your greatest asset to to the community. Because that can be your economic development, that can be tourism, all those things kind of kind of fall in that umbrella, but I'll switch back to the story of Ottawa. Ottawa took that that to heart. And today, if you were to go to Ottawa, Illinois, if you know where that's at, just west of Chicago, about an hour. People in the suburbs of Chicago, now away, do I go to Chicago or do I go to Ottawa? Because they built their downtown, they have breweries and distilleries, they have restaurants, I mean, they they took it to heart. And and they literally have people traveling from the suburbs of Chicago to a little town of sixteen thousand, well, not even that, really. Um, take for dinner for a night out. And I think that's what Centerton could be, you know, I think I mentioned this to the mayor and Josie in one of our conversations. You know, there's a community almost identical to Centerton, but it's out in Utah, Saratoga Springs. And same thing, I mean, everybody wanted to get away from the city, so they were moving across the river, across the lake to Saratoga. Household everywhere, I knew every time I went out there, I have a son who lives out there, every six months, there was three new subdivisions rolling popped up. And but there was no business. And it was like, you know, all the way back to where people got away from to go to Menards or to the Home Depot or wherever. And so, but now that they have the rooftops, and this is where Centerton is, by the way. You know, if you become somewhat unique, you're you're on the cusp of businesses will want to be here. Uh, so you just need to find that identity of who you are. And then kind of spread that message, spread that that brand, whatever that, whatever you want to call it, across this region. Centerton's got a lot going for it, it really does. Um, but that's my spiel, like I said, mo- most of this in there, it's a. A lot of it's very basic, a lot of boring, um, but that kind of outlines what what the goals would be. For here in Centerton, and in a pretty, pretty rapid fashion. And the other thing I've done too is I outline all my agreements pretty much the same way. Uh, people can get out of them almost whenever they want. Because I have confidence in what I do. And quite frankly, it's it it, I rarely have somebody get out early because it's working and they see it's happening. I have no doubt that it happened here in Center too, but it's, I think you've got good people here. I I've not met all of you individually, I've met several people from Centerton. And aren't in this room. I think you got the core, you know, the other big thing too is, you know, and people get tired of me saying this, but it takes an army. People, it's not just a city council, it's not just a chamber, it's not just a club. You know, the senior, I came up here earlier, you know, seniors, military veterans. Those can be the core of our, because you need volunteers too. You get a lot of people to do a lot of different things that don't take a lot of effort, you know, many hands make light work, and that's what you need in any community, a lot of people. That's the other thing we do, we work on building those synergies that bring people together in a common cause. So. There you go.
Thank you so much for, oh, sorry, go ahead, Amy.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you so much for uh walking through that, appreciate the time, um. Couple of things as I listened to you speak, uh, so how do you measure success in what you do?
There there's a lot of different ways to measure success, the the main way to measure success is you you need to have a set of guidelines and a set of goals. And core core values and goals. And you you know, in the document, it's not right there, because you don't have the document in front of you, but it does outline timelines for certain things to happen. Uh, what is change, what is center confusion? If I were to ask ten different people, I might have ten different answers. What is your brand? I might get ten different people with ten different answers. So, you know, to me, the first thing you do before you spend a dime on anything is figure out who you are. Who do you want to be? Who do you, what do you want the outside world to look at you as? Once you have that, and everything you do revolves around making that real, making that happen, so. Um, you know, like I said, you don't you don't have the document in front of you, so it's really not fair, but there is a, there is a set of timelines for certain things to happen. Um, you know, marketing, branding, vision, chamber foundations, I mean, all that stuff is in there. I don't know if that answered your question.
No, it's it's fine, is and my second question is, have you been to a city council meeting in the city of Centerton or involved here um in the past?
I hear that whole question.
Have you been involved in the city of Centerton in any fashion or attended a city council meeting in the past or planning meeting?
I I I've been involved with a few people, but no, I have not been to a city council meeting.
Perfect, that's my last question, thank you.
Yes, so just to let you know, I met um John through a mutual friend, and when he shared with me his background, what his passion is and what he does. We started having conversations because we were talking, you know, conversations would come up with economic development, chamber, well, here's a chamber. And so I really got him and mayor, you know, we've had had meetings, um, so that's that's really why we brought John this far along. Is to say, this is things that we've discussed as a council, and so he's put forth a a proposal, and here we are today.
Oh, I thought you had a question.
I I did, but I I know the answer.
Okay, I want to make sure that we didn't leave anybody out.
I was just gonna ask, you don't live in Arkansas, you live in Missouri?
Off of Missouri, just north of P Ridge.
It's across the border.
But if it means anything, we do most of our shopping in, so. It's closer.
But you have a cheaper sales tax.
What what kind of businesses have you brought to an area before? I mean, is this more of just a chamber play, or do you actually have a strategy going into our area, like? You you said you've never been involved in one of the meetings, so I mean, I think my question is. It sounds like we would almost start at building a brand and we, gosh, we've, you know, ultimately, we do have roofs, but. What what, I guess, examples have you had of restaurant or hospitality that that you've brought into an area? Um, and then do you have any thoughts around specifically just your outside looking in, what you think Centerton? Uh, you know, the first priority should be on something like this, because this is, my original ask was to bring somebody on economic development full time. For the city, so I'm just curious where, you know, outsourcing it again, wha- what are your thoughts or just, you know, high level viewpoint? What do you think we need?
Personally, and and you know, there's not always one right answer. First of all, so I will say, this is my opinion, it doesn't mean there's not other things that can actually happen with that, but I believe that Centerton. You know, I've heard different discussions from different people. One thing that actually was very interesting to me was the discussion around the youth. And building a complex, building a a city that caters to youth sports, youth activities, those types of things. And I don't know that in this area, now there are places around the country that have that do that, and they do it very successfully. I don't know that there is one here. So you want to, first of all, you want to find a niche, whether that's the niche or not, I think, you know, that needs to be studied and kind of reviewed a little bit more. But you need to find a niche that other people like, or they're not doing very well. So that would be one thing. The other thing is always your downtown. If you have a unique downtown, you will draw more people, you will draw business, and you will draw tourism. That's just a fact. Um, so if it was me, without the all the knowledge that exists in this room, which we would get as we proceed through this process. I would say concentrate on youth, concentrate on your downtown. And then everything else, I mean, once you're downtown, is there economic development throughout the city happens? Um, it just, it just does, and I I can't even explain it all the time, I think it's just the uniqueness. And the ability to draw people, because everybody wants to go out to eat, I mean, who wants to go to Red Rock? Who wants to go to Pollock Park? They would much rather go to a local place that's had a nice experience, that's local. And people, I think people inherently want to support local. But they also want a nice style and a nice quality of life, so if you don't have it locally, they go elsewhere. So you need to create it locally, and that, so I would concentrate on those little things first. And then the big things will come with the one exception, you are close to the airport. And that's probably a whole entirely different conversation, but I think you have some unique opportunities being close to the airport. Which, you know, which we haven't really talked about, but I look at this not solely as a chamber play. But I look at this more as an economic development play with the chamber being able to assist with that, that makes sense?
I like where, how you're thinking, because actually, today I was uh studying the census for Centerton. And our community is a fairly young. Family community with average age like thirty-one, right, with younger kids. Um, a fairly good income, I think, I think they said like around eighty-five thousand average, so we're a fairly young. Community, and so I agree with you that we, I like the idea of sports. Where families can come together, take their kids, things like that, so we're thinking on the same page, I was actually thinking about this today, so.
It's it's interesting, the sports, and and, you know, I grew up, I've, we've got nine kids and they all played sports, so I'm I'm familiar with that, but. The thing that, you know, I was talking with the chamber director over in Branson. And of course, Branson, the whole different ballgame, it's a whole different thing, you can't even compare Branson with anywhere else. But he made a comment, because they have a really nice sports complex over there. And he said, the sports complex in the summertime actually is their biggest single draw to Branson. All the other things, sports complex, so.
Right after the 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 mall went bankrupt, they made it into a sports complex, and yeah, you're right, it does very well. Uh, yeah, Amy, good points, I like what you said too. I mean, I I think that's what we're all trying to figure out, especially when we we don't own a lot of real estate in a stretch. To make a nice downtown area, and I mean, we're not trying to compare to our neighboring cities by any means, but at the same time. Understanding how we do that when we don't necessarily own a lot of the real estate, obviously, is a is a focal point, thank you for sharing.
I did have some thoughts on your annexing, however, by the way, too, but we won't go into that.
Public comment next meeting.
I've I've been here thirty, thirty-five years, I guess now, and we've never had a downtown. It's just, it's, Centerton started when I moved here, this population was less than three hundred and uh, and thirty, thirty-five years, we've, well, we've. Almost always been in the state of Arkansas, the the fastest growing town, and uh, I don't see it stopping. But as far as where a downtown could be right now. We used to call over where the old city hall was downtown, but that's never really kind of been. Downtown is usually centered. Generally.
Definitely, that's true.
If you looked at the center of Centerton right now, it surely wouldn't be over there, it's probably gonna be moving west.
I I, your your point is well taken, and Centerton, that that's a unique challenge, because I will, I will, I was. I would suggest that you want to have someone with the same challenge, you know, Saxon, Texas. Now, COVID has thrown this project behind a little bit, they're just north of Dallas. Um, but they have actually bought land because they they are gonna build their downtown. They want, they want a town square, typical old country town square with shops on it, restaurants, um, because they know the value of it. You know, because, you know, down in Texas, north of Dallas, I mean, you just, all it is is, everything runs and everything, and no one has any identity. But they understand that they have to create that identity. Uh, like I said, COVID's kind of put them two or three years behind, but they're still bought the land, they're still starting to move dirt and make roads, but. That's the same thing, they they, that's how important it is to them, we gotta build it.
Unless it doesn't have a downtown, they've got a square, right?
It does, and it doesn't have to be in the middle of town, although typically that would be where you'd find it. I think it's 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 all the uniqueness, it's all, you make it unique, it could be anywhere in town.
Centerton's history is a little bit different than some of our other surrounding towns, you know, so we're unique, I think. Well, I think we're at a pivotal point, because we've got, I mean, Mars Mercantile is opening, what, April first? So there's opportunity for that stretch down there, how can we, you know, move it along, help it to get developed, you know? Definitely rally around that event, you know?
It it takes it takes an effort, it's not comfortable. You know, the city has to probably do some things that will be uncomfortable at times. Um, you know, it it's, you know, I hate the word personally, because I've seen it abused so much. But TIF districts can be good if they're done right. TIF district, tax incremental fin- incremental financing district. They have, but you can do many tests, you know, so it doesn't impact the whole area, just a little two-block area, you can do. You can do all sorts of things that help spur that.
Everybody tries to stay awake, because the taxes do. Yeah, you you talked about Branson, but Branson Landing, that's a, that's a TIF district and and.
But it's unique, yes, that's what's, you know, even though it's.
And I will add one thing to talk about downtown. Is, you know, we do, you might check out our comprehensive plan online, we actually have an area identified behind McDonald's as a downtown center. So we have some visions, you know, the city does, and that is something we could talk about some.
So we have some visions, you know, the city does, and that is something we could talk about at some point. Because, you know, we do, and then also, he mentioned about Mercantile, you know, I've, I've talked, and so has Lorraine and myself, we've talked to Dave Mars, who. Has a show, you know, TV with a fabulous, I don't know what it's called, fabulous fixtures, but he's wanting to revitalize, he's wanting to revive, revitalize all that. He wants to revitalize all that. He's working one little step at a time. So I think with that, with that Mercantile, let's go put, actually, Centerton on the map. Cause he told me a lot of people come to Bentonville, you know, to look for his merchandise and all that merchandise will be here at Centerton now. So that'll, that'll be big. And I'm not sure what all he has in there. He's, he's gonna get back with us in the near future and show us, but. That's gonna, that's gonna be a little bit of a spark. And then later on, we'll talk about our building across the street. He, he's interested in helping us with too, but. We'll talk about that later in the meeting.
And you'll be, you'll be amazed, once the city takes action and they see things happening. Money will come out the sidelines. Because they just want, the people have money, they want to invest. They want to see that the community is invested. And once they see that, okay, they're gonna look out for us. Let's go do something. Let's buy that building and do what we want to do. Let's do this, let's do that. So that, that's almost a, a natural given, that those kind of things happen well.
He's very excited about that down there.
Hey, Bill, would it, I mean, would it be worth waiting to hear more from you on the, uh. You know, the, the downtown and what you, you know, with the. Mercantile and, and everything around there before we make a decision on something like this? I mean, would, would we be okay tabling this temporarily?
No, I want to update you on is this what we want to do with the building, but.
Well.
So I, I think, I, I would like to move forward with this, but.
Well, so. We had talked about as a council and, and economic developer person, I know there, I've talked to you. There are several business owners who wouldn't mind starting a chamber that I've talked to. I brought that to your attention a couple of months ago.
That's what he's here to do.
It's certainly time, those businesses that are interested with John, right? Right. I guess I have an issue, I mean, this is a great, nothing against, this is great. I guess I just have an issue outsourcing some. Uh, another company. That doesn't live here, has any connection to Centerton or anything like that.
Uh, uh, yeah, I, I, I wasn't gonna go that far. I was just gonna say, could we table it for the temporary, but. But I think that was, you know, a couple of months ago, we started talking about salary studies and, and where we wanted to invest money. I thought economic development was where we wanted to really look at something full time. That way we had the full dedication of the resource. I understand that that can be said. My ask is that we table it and talk more about what's gonna happen with the old city hall. Before we agree again to another company outside of this area.
Well, also, we have our meeting coming or our work session with planning, planning commission. I think that's a. That's a good time maybe to talk about. You know, our vision collectively with planning, the commission with us, that type.
And maybe he comes. I mean, if he wants to do it in our city, maybe he comes, because he said this is the first one he's been to. Maybe that's, I mean, it's an open meeting, why not? Or open planning session. I mean, if that's something he's interested in, just my thoughts. Bill, I, 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 again, some of these things just come up without a whole lot of advance notice on who we're asking, but I think it would be nice to. Have a little bit more conversation around this.
I, I will say from, from the standpoint of, of being part of a, uh. Business association and Kiwanis Club and. Other clubs that were involved with communities. The biggest issue you have locally is time. Time is number one. If you're trying to run a business, do you have time to, to, to see, to have the vision? To push things along, time and energy. So sometimes that may mean that you need to hire somebody that just does that. Whether they live local or they don't live.
But we had talked about a person being.
Trying to do that, because if you're trying to run, you know, you're a local dentist or you're a pharmacist or whatever, you've got a business that you run. And a family that you have or whatever. And so a lot of cases, it's, it's hard to do that and you'll find that. Little groups will get together and then they kind of fizzle, because there's just not enough time and there's not enough energy. And so that's where. The possibility of hiring somebody from the outside, and that doesn't necessarily mean whether they live in Missouri or Arkansas or whatever. But it's just not so inundated with their daily business. That kind of helps spur things.
I liked what he said though, but along those lines, he said the community needs to tell people who we are. And so we are the community. We're asking an outside entity to come in. And tell us who we are.
He's not gonna tell us.
I mean, I'm just meaning, and I don't mean you personally.
I, I was probably up until a few years ago, the biggest critic of outside consultants, advisors, whatever you want to call them. But I learned quickly when I had a good one. That sometimes it's good to have an outside view who doesn't have a dog in the race, so to speak. To help give that perspective. And you have a lot of agendas inside of a city. And you have a lot of people who smash ideas and so forth. And sometimes it takes. A moderator, a mediator that really doesn't have an invested interest. In what that decision is, may help, to help make that. I'm not saying that's the case, and I'm not saying it should be me, I'm just saying, even if it's not me. I would recommend that you actually do have somebody from the outside, because I can tell you, I've rarely have seen a city do this on their own. Rarely.
I tell, hey, I understand that. I think when we go back a couple of months ago, though, even like when we did bids on equipment, we asked for a couple bids. Personally, I would have liked to seen a couple of options and again, in the planning session, hey, here's some options that we could have as we think forward in the future, like. If, even if it's a special meeting, we could go the outsourcing route, we could go hiring somebody on full time. Like, we've never had that in-depth discussion. And so. You talk about not a, you know, a horse in the race, but at this time, like. I've asked those things and I'm, I'm sure Bill reached out to you to come. I don't know how that worked out, or, or, you know, like Josie said. But again, it would be nice to have options. And I think that's where I draw back on this, is we're basically be saying, hey, here's the option, let's go with it. And I'm, I, I don't see the harm in tabling it when. Like you said, the initial phase is talking about the brand, understand what you want to do. Well, we have a planning session at the end of this month. And so again. My motion is to table this until we have that, so we can have further discussion as a city. As an open, uh, open meeting in the planning session. So again, that, that's my motion.
And that's a good point, Justin, just if we were gonna hire an economic developer on staff. The mayor, whoever would interview certain people. Have we looked at other? Probably haven't, I'm just kind of asking. This is like, this is the first one, right? We've.
Yes, and, and our, our initial conversation, or initial conversation was to start a chamber. And that's, that's where he's really gonna kind of spearhead us in that. And then he also, you know, his agreement said he's not locked into a fee. I mean, if we don't like him. You know, he, I mean, you know, he, we're not locked into a multi-year deal. You know, I was just trying to get something started, you know, if we want to do a chamber, get.
But Bill, we could have had this conversation where we have options. Again, I think that's what we've ran to in the past, is getting. Getting pigeonholed into a, a decision when, I mean, why would we not have a planning session as a city, discuss this, talk through that and hold off until then? Like, I think that's what, we're almost saying, hey, let's, let's get this off of our plate, let's hire somebody. I love that he's, you know, in pine, like, that brings a fresh perspective. I love that. I love these connected notes, Josie. But again, I, I think we've asked for options, going back to even buying equipment. And in this case, we have one option and it's here on the ta- the, the council's table. And, and not a whole lot of, I don't know, warm and fuzzy feeling without having a prior discussion on this. So again, I'm making a motion to table this until our planning session, but that, that's the last thing I'll say on that.
Just a point. You're making the plan, or the, the work session really long, because we've already got a full plate on, on for this coming meeting.
I know, but I'd already, I'd asked for three things on the planning session.
Yeah.
Add a cou- added a couple of things. So initially.
What?
Jeff Hawkins coming from. Well, he's.
Yeah, but we, we have a duty to send taxpayers money the right way, too.
He's the, we're starting, so planning director from the. He's not with the colleges.
No, he's a regional planning. He, he's actually.
Again, I don't know why we would rush into this. I get it, the planning session may have a full agenda key. But to give that answer and say, hey, we don't want to overload the planning meeting, okay, well then maybe we split it up. I don't know why we're rushing this decision. Again, going back to even when we got our funds, we rushed a lot of stuff, but there's no reason to rush something right now. On our city, when we've been asking for months and then here we have one contact and say, hey, here it is, let's, let's do it. I don't agree with that. And I'm sorry, that's not the right thing to do.
Alright, so he's made a, he's made a motion to table it.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay. Any more discussion? Oh, call, sir.
Mr. Elin.
Yes.
Darren Warren.
No.
Josie Reed.
No.
Keith Higginbotham.
No.
Justin Cowger.
Yes.
Amy Rochette.
Yes.
Well, they could die. I'm gonna vote yes.
Of course you are. Of course you are. It's somebody, somebody you cherry pick, Bill.
It's tabled.
Yes to table.
I voted yes to table it.
You, I thought no was to.
No, you, you were voting to table and there was three noes to table and there are yeses to table.
Yes, I'm sitting around now, I wrote it down, sorry. That's my apology.
I'll vote, I'll vote yes to tables.
Yeah, and honestly, I'd love to have more information for our planning meeting if we need to break it up to Keith's point. If it's too much, let's split it up.
No, I, I voted yes to table it.
Thank you for your time.
Right, thank you.
Sure, sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
So I guess I wanted to just ask, what's the follow-up to this? So it's tabled, so what do we want to add on?
He asked for more information.
Well, I think, so, to talk about it at the work session. Okay. Maybe like get, get plannings.
Then he also said to split up the work session.
Well, I think that's a whole nother conversation. Okay, so it's tabled, it'll be put on the agenda for the work session. I like, yeah.
Don't have anywhere to go, Wednesday after. It's gonna be a long. Alright, so Nick.
Sorry, can I ask the one thing? The work session. It's not just gonna be a presentation, right? Cause I, work session, we're gonna have questions, right? It's not just. Cause I think we do need to, like, I want to hear planning director, or the planning, um, departments.
Yeah, so the, so the work session will be a joint work session. The planning commission and the city council.
Right.
Uh, we have the questions you asked, we already been working on the maps, we'll address those first. We, then we're gonna have, uh, we're gonna planning here. Uh, to kind of help us, help guide us how we want to move forward, is with that comprehensive plan.
Okay, I just.
And, and, and that's why they're there, they're working with another city, uh, doing the same exact thing. That's why I invited them here. Cause I think that with the council and the planning commission, we all get together, get on the same page.
Well, that's, I, I want it to be more of an interactive.
Yeah, no.
Asking questions, not just the presentation to us.
No, no, yeah, and he's gonna have his little, you know, yeah, no, that's exactly what we're gonna do. Well, yeah, that's the first thing we're gonna do is answer, you know, those, you asked for. But, you know, since we wanted to play a commissioner too, we want to make it more of a productive work session, like, how do we move? Where, where do we want to go?
Right.
What is our vision, you know, with this comprehensive plan, you know, because I know there's a lot of questions from both sides. So that, that's, that's the outlook.
I, and, and I would, to kind of defend Justin's position a little bit, and I may be stepping on the line with Justin. Uh, the, the big push for economic development has really come a lot from you and from Justin. You know, push towards that direction. And I think tonight, from, from my feel is. We feel like maybe we're like forced to have to vote, vote on a, a resolution rather than gathering the information. Is that, that kind of?
Some of the questions that I want to hear from planning, or, or some of the things that I have involves all of this stuff. And so that's why, you know, I initially said, hey, can we have this? To have all of us together to kind of talk through some of the visions that actually were brought up tonight. And so.
And I would say, from kind of what I was trying to explain earlier, from a local level, usually when you have a chamber, a lot of that isn't spurred from. Inside those cities, there's usually a greater outside chamber, like Little Rock would come up here and help us try to grow our channel, right? So you would always, you'd almost always have somebody from outside the city that's helping to spur that. So that's where I think you would be open to somebody outside to, that has the time and energy to focus that, to try to, you know, to do that. So that's kind of where I was throwing that in earlier, but.
I think everybody's on the same page, just we're coming in at different areas.
I just wondered if they weren't maybe feeling like there was, because it was brought up in several meetings, we need an economic developer, we need this, we need this, we need this. And now. Here it is.
Here it is, but yeah, let's. Yes.
I'll, I'll make sure to get everybody's questions answered. I was waiting for Darren to come back too. I might not get it back. Alright, next is, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve. Uh, this is purchase of a ham roller for the street department. Edgar's gonna tell you about it.
So this is a roller, it's replacing our old one as well. It does have a lot of, uh, tear and wear on it. The pins are coming off, it spends more time down. And this is for all asphalt patches. So it's time to replace it. All the equipment that we're replacing. Uh, eventually we'll hit a surplus, so we'll probably auction it out and. Put the details and make sure that whoever's purchasing it knows that there's some defects behind it. So. Uh, we did go with Cat and John Deere to get a quote. Uh, we were speaking with them and, uh, to get a used one, they didn't really want to give us a number, because as soon as they come in, they leave. Pretty much, and they're priced about the same as a brand new one. So, uh, we're going for a new one again. Uh, we did budget for this one at sixty thousand, uh, either one, we're below budget. But we're going with the cheaper one, it's at, uh, fifty-three thousand. It is, uh, if we were to vote on it and it passes, it'll be here by around April. So that's, that's when they, it'll begin.
This'll make up for the last one where we went over budget.
Pretty, pretty much. So we're, we're balancing that pretty well.
Great planning.
Yeah, it was, it's kind of hard, because last year we tried to over budget just slightly, uh, for inflation. But then there's some items that are cheaper. I don't know what happened, especially with interest rate, people stopped purchasing vehicles, I guess. And equipment was starting to miraculously appear, so it, I mean, it, it's been crazy, buying an equipment. So this is a, a specialized item, so, uh, it does come in at a very good, uh. Price and, and a very good time for us as well, so. I said it is under budget, which is also good for us.
Did you get all of it? I want to make sure you got it all.
So final price on this, just so I can get it correctly, is it?
Fifty-five, fifty-three, five, three fifty-five fifty. I wrote in resolution two.
I saw the two numbers in, in, I guess, in, in your presentation, Edgar.
Alright, any more questions?
Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash one-two, a resolution authorized the Marion C. Kirk as representative of the city of Centerton, Arkansas. To enter to a purchase agreement with Stribling Equipment Springdale, Arkansas for the purchase of a two thousand twenty-three. Ham HD twelve VV roller for the Centerton Street Department.
Someone have a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve. You had a motion for maybe, we have a second? You got somebody?
Josie.
I heard three or four of them at one time. Alright, roll call.
Mr. Elin.
Yes.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham.
Sir.
Justin Cowger.
Yes.
And Amy Rochette.
Yes.
Alright, so I see Alan smiling face again. This the last time I got you up here, Alan? No, two more times.
No, just once more, this one and the other.
This it in half, okay. So this is, this is resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen. Uh, this is an agreement, Garber for professional services, Alan.
Same as with CEI, it's another one that we want to requalify, we design products to them through the task force. So, yeah, so we went through this one, worked with Brian to get that agreement with them, so. Asked out some of those questions.
Remind me what they do.
Garber's another engineering firm, so again, they would also be able to do the same thing that CEI can, this way. By having multiple, I can also compare, what are their, what's their timeframe? I can then bounce off the, if I want to assign them to it, CEI can do it for five thousand dollars, but can, won't get to it for a month. Garber can get to it for four thousand dollars, same timeframe. Right?
So these resolutions are basically just. Pre-elected companies and then you can compare them, okay?
So I mean, that's a lot of. So I mean, that's a lot of, where I can then balance costs and timeframe to try to get these done. The best way I can for the city. So, and then after, you know, these are all two-year contracts, so I'm for the calendar years twenty-three. So I don't have to come in every year and do this. Um, so that way. Did three jobs at the Garber and now I'm like, oh, maybe that's not the quality I've been looking for. I already have someone else pre-qualified and not locked in for two years. So, and then the last one's gonna be half, should I guess would be fifteen. Uh, they've been the contractor near the last few years, they still have a lot of documents and know a lot more about the city, they've been here as much. So it's why I'm pushing, they'll try to get these three in there and go with, so.
Garber's helped us in the last two or three years with some of our codes as well. Helped us when we haven't had time to get some of those things, they've helped us with some of our planning codes.
Any questions on this one? Sure. Say, you might, uh, just hang out, cause I'm.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash one.
Oh, wait, 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 did you have a question?
Yeah, sorry.
Alright.
Just trying to understand, so, we have something that comes up. In the past, you would come to council and say, hey, I've got. These. Companies that can do this, I've got these engineering executives.
So same as how we did the task orders for CEI earlier is.
Right, right.
Oh, you know, we go to something in. Um. Last year, the last one with that sidewalk infill. Let's need to have plans, we can send them out to bid. You know, if we need to send that out to some of the contract that. Or design those, I can say, here, we're already pre-qualified with them, I don't have to go through the process of. Here's what I wanna do, here's what I fear it's gonna cost, I need to advertise it. Then I need to pay to advertise it, get those bids, wait a month, it's right away, so that's two months now. That we're delaying.
To come to council, cause there's a resolution that says I can go to here, here, or here.
Yep, and then I would just come with the final resolution, the task where saying, here's what my agreement is with them to do this job for this much money. I come right to that point, so it just expedites that process substantially.
This, this isn't new, this is, we did this. Two years ago as well, to allow.
Years ago, but.
Correct. I didn't want you to think it was something brand new. This is something that we will.
I, I go to my, I wasn't here.
That's the part, it's like, a lot of these, like, had. Here with CI and Garber, um, and CI one hadn't even been updated in a while. Um, we had one with half, but they were also acting as a city engineer, so it kinda scaled back what some of that is. But again, it's how we can push this forward and expedite that process, really why we're getting pre-qualified.
We get all the questions, Andrew? We sure? Counselor, let's try it again.
Alright, Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash one-three. A resolution authorized in the Marion City Clerk as representatives of the city of Centon, Arkansas to enter to an agreement with Garber. Marion LLC Rogers Arkansas for professional services for specific projects in the city of Centon, Arkansas.
Somebody make motion to and up Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen.
I'm on it.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second, roll call.
Mister Elon.
Yes.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Heath Higginbotham.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Justin Cowger.
Yes, sir.
And Amy Rochette.
Yes.
Alright, next is.
I'll go ahead and just jump to fifteen.
No, I'm, I'm not gonna self-ass. Alright, next is, he's close by, he's, he's good, he's relaxing for a minute. Alright, next is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash fourteen. Uh, this is, uh, Carl asked me to bring forward a. Resolution to establish another bank account. E-Rad seizures, he could probably tell you a little bit about it, this for the police.
Yes, so basically what this says is a tool for our investigative division, um, kind of a new. So having an influx of frauds, whether it be wire or whatever, just kinda, you know. Lot of, uh, digital money nowadays, the best way to put it, and people can hide that on anything that has any kind of, uh. Chip, a strip, anything like that, I mean, you can actually. Attach money to the strip on your driver's license card, and so using that instead of. Criminals aren't transporting, you know, all this, a lot of money around in their cars, if we're doing things or anything. Everything's kinda digital nowadays, they can hide money and encrypt it. What this is, is we purchased the software E-Rad for our criminal investigation divisions. Um, where we can actually check those, um, it'll tell us what's on it, we have ability to freeze funds. A good number of things, um, for investigative purposes. What this account does is if we freeze it, or if we seize money, um, it goes to. E-Rad, we have to have an account on file, to where they can keep that money separate from anything else, it goes in there while, you know, court proceedings are with. Um, else can, you know, go ahead and finish out the case, just kind of a safe place to hold it. Um, if it ended up being a seizure, or if it was, you know, possibly stolen money, and we're working a case. We're holding it, you know, and safe keeping, can freeze it for so many days, and then we can move it over there. Uh, and basically, you know, start our investigation, if it ends up being stolen, we can get it back to the right person. Just kinda allows us to, the software allows us to do that type of investigation, and then this bank account would just keep us separate from any other funds. Really all we're asking.
You know, uh, what happens to the interest?
No interest on these.
I'm not really, cause I mean, yeah, if we have money in there, then we're gonna incur interest, so I don't know, I don't know.
Think going back to the general fund.
You know, I would think that any interest on the money that we're wholly, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be entitled to give them any more money than what was. Typically, if this is a seizure, this would typically would be a seizure that ultimately could be, you know. It'll go through civil process and all that, and they'll have that, you know, their day in courts, or where that funds come from, but typically where this software is used, like. For instance, someone goes and buys a, uh, you know, a couple kilos of, of drugs, and then. Encry money on a card, we find it, we see that there shouldn't be any money on a driver's license card, or on anything else anyway. We, you know, if that's the game, we're able to prove that we think that's it, and that would end up being a seizure for the city, to be used for. You know, various things, so, that's really kinda all it is, is just to have the ability. To check for those things, cause right now we have no way, I mean, it could be right under our nose. Uh, we just really have no way to. Uh, be able to track it, just criminals are getting smarter, um, and we're just kinda, kinda.
Trying to get smarter.
And things, you know, to, to get smart and be right there with it, but. The company is, you know, speaking with them, they just said that's what they. Their recommendation is that we have a bank account that is separate from other, um, just that way, it. Doesn't get, you know, has any kind of trouble, just easy to, easy to separate this deposits and such, so. Um, I don't know that it'll be anything that's gonna be used very often, but in the event that. And we do have, um, this type of case, we're able to recover some funds, we'll have a safe place to put it.
Not set up a non-interest bearing account.
I was gonna say, we, I, I don't like to take these collect interests, I mean.
There may, there may be something, I, I know a lot of like. It sounds almost like a trust or an escrow account, that it's, it's held at some point, and it's not our funds unless a court makes a determination. And, and often, interest on that will be, will go to. Uh, so, something, that's our reason.
Cause I can see the thing is, has a hundred thousand dollars stolen from them, and it comes.
And they're like, yeah, they, they've lost, yeah.
For ten months, they're like, hey, that's my interest, that was my stolen money, you owe me the interest, and then we gotta. Figure out how much money to pay them.
We can, we can, I could have Carl to check, I'm sure they'll have any, I don't think. Darren, I got Darren, I could have him check that. You know, I'm not, I'm, they would be happy to.
Kind of concerned, I was just, that was my purchase for my period, I started out for.
I would think, I mean, it'd be similar to, you know, we did a drug seizure. Tomorrow, and it was cash, and, you know, it ran a lot of times with holders, it goes into the drug fund, so I don't know how the county operates their drug fund, but. You know, I mean. Well, I mean, any of that would be your own interest.
Might be something that, might be something that you can just check with somebody else that's got one of these accounts and see.
Yeah, this is a pretty, a pretty well-known, um.
I'd almost bet you it draws interest on it.
I would say, I would say it probably would, not that count, but.
Maybe a little bit easier.
And this, this company, um, they provide us with the tools and stuff to be able to do that, um, it's just. It's a little bit of something, I'm sure, one thing that we are kinda trying to get more in depth, we are seeing more of those types of crimes. We don't have as many as someone walking up and, you know, robbing somebody or breaking into a house as much as. A lot of stuff's identities, uh, and, you know, people concealing money, and there's a lot of. It's a lot of digital money out there, you know, whether someone hacks a bank account, we're able to do this, th- this is just one option. Um, that we're trying to get into, and then also we're sending detectives to, um, digital forensic school. I think it'll start next month, and that'll give us even more capabilities to kinda do more things with all digital investigation, that's just kinda. They're, they're getting smarter, it's a lot easier to transfer, you know, money digitally and hide it. Versus, you know, taking a chance on driving up road and getting pulled over and having it on you, so it's just, just kinda the way that. They're, uh, they're starting to. Um, to do things and make it a little bit harder, just for, you know, Joe Blow, police officers, so we know what they're looking for, but. At least that we have some of the tools, and, you know, we, if some of this, if we come in contact with it, we will do something hopefully, so. That's pretty much it. Anybody's, any more questions?
We will, we will, I'll, I'll have Carl check on the interest thing, cause I. Sure, we could tell we don't want interest, and I'll be, they'll be happy to do that. I don't think, I guess, I don't think these, these accounts that we've been setting up, but, but we need to check, that is a good question. If it is, it's very small, so, but it's still there, so.
And I can add, I've got, we've got a good contact with the company to see what they. Um, I don't know how, I mean, if they know the fine details of what other cities and stuff do with their bank accounts, but.
Like, so when I, when I sit, when I give this to Carl tomorrow, I'll, I ask him to. But, if he's here tomorrow. Any more questions?
Yeah, Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash one-four. A resolution authorized establishment of new bank accounts at First National Bank of NWA for the creation of E-Rad seizures checking account. And to designate individuals authorized to perform various actions on behalf of the city of Centon with regard to said account. And for other purposes.
Oh, I make motion to. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash fourteen.
Go ahead.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, sir.
Mister Elon.
Yes.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Heath Higginbotham.
Yes, sir.
Justin Cowger.
Yes.
And Amy Rochette.
Yes.
Alright, next is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifteen. Uh, this is agreement with half engineering for professional services, and Al will be happy to talk to us about that.
Hello, Alan.
Hey, Alan, how you doing? I ain't seen you for a while.
This is the last of the three engineering firms looking, tried to pre-qualify, um. Engineering serving forth as a city engineer, so they have a lot of most recent information and projects that. We use for some of these finaling, and is also qualified to project these things you might pre-qualify. Last one.
Okay. Any questions on this one? We've, like he said, we've used half for quite a while, so. Elsewhere.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash one-five, a resolution authorized in Marion City Clerk. As representatives of the city of Centon, Arkansas to enter to an agreement with Half Associates Incorporated, Benville, Arkansas. For professional services for specific projects in the city of Centon, Arkansas.
I'll make motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifteen. Motion, we have a second? Everybody?
Second.
Second, roll call.
Mister Elon. Darren Warren.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Heath Higginbotham.
Yes, sir.
Justin Cowger.
Yes, sir.
And Amy Rochette.
Alright, our last resolution is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixteen. I will bring our parks. Superintendent Director. Anyway, I'll bring Josh up, and he's gonna talk to you a little bit about, uh, this purchase, this is a pump track.
Uh, in ring chocolate, everybody.
Oh, oh, yeah.
We got, we got the good stuff.
Uh, we're looking at installing a pump track, is what I call it, is a more of a bike trail, but it's condensed. You can actually come through the entire system without having to pedal as much. And I hate to say, if you've been to Bentonville by the dog park, it's basically same design, uh, not same design, but same figure. Uh, they have done it to the land we have available to them. And that's kind of the. Some of it got cut off, there is gonna be two sections. Uh, one section coming off of, which I guess, honest, it's coming off Seabutte Nomad, which is basically the road going to cemetery, game cemetery. Uh, the walking trail does run behind it, we are gonna have a parking lot, uh, so you're gonna have that picture you can see coming from the parking lot to one side, and then from the trail to the other side. You'll have access both ways. One side will be kind of a beginner for the smaller kids, and then you can ride up and get that section right there shown, and that'll be more of the intermediate. So the larger kids can do it, and it'll, it'll be more challenge than the smaller side. And that's basically for the land we had available, that's all we could fit in there with parking and everything else. Uh, we are gonna add signage to it, uh, cause it is a park, so we'll have a sign out front for it. Um, and like I said, tied into the walking trail that's already there.
This is so cute.
I'm excited. For this, of course, wanting, I'm excited for it.
I'm like, what in the heck is a pump track?
If you go to the Bentonville, said down by the dog park, it has concrete, you drive through.
I love that.
The exact same thing, and that's the same company that's doing it. Uh, they are well-known, I did talk to him today, it does come with a one-year. Structural warranty on it, and I did talk to the sales guy before I actually left City Hall today, and he said. Being as we are in the Mecca of the bicycle area, anything after a year within reason, they'll come and work with us and take care of us. Uh, they wanna keep their trails and their designs functioning and working still, especially being around North East Orange.
Why don't we, you said that you were gonna put some signs up?
I was gonna sign up the name of the park.
Yeah, but. How do we drive people there? Like, how do people know about this? Like, is there a way to put signs?
On that too, as of the signs that run to the cities, uh. They're talking over on that to get more signs throughout the city. Um, I know they go for to AMP, we are working on that to do. More signage and more of the signs that match the rest of the cities that show where parks are at, what directions, I think they call them wayfarer signs, I think is what they call.
Wayfinding.
Wayfinding signs, yes.
We have so many families with young kids here, this is so cute.
And it would be nice, like I said, you're not far from the high school. So that will, there will be nights for it, and people driving by, going to and from school, have easier access to see it, and then I'm so probably drive to it. And then hopefully down the road, we have more plans for the end of the walking trail at Seabutte Keller. So that's kinda gonna tie all of it, one big trail together, it'll shoot.
Wait. Wanna ride my bike on?
Your kid.
Might look funny, but you can.
If you can get Josh off of it.
Josh is right, right down the street.
Those ones with my kids, so I enjoy.
The one in Bentonville?
That one, we've gone all the way to solder pin.
Well, yeah.
Twenty miles, yeah.
I'll take my grandkids, that was an excuse for me.
There you go.
Any questions on this? Any more questions? Josh, you got anything else?
Yeah, for me, I don't know.
I, I put the cost in there, it missed the hundred ninety thousand.
And do we have any, um.
I pointed out, cause every time I, you always ask me to, so I'm making sure I'm getting it in there for you, so.
And I guess the, the answer that Mr. would you have? Two hundred budgeted, uh, we're gonna do it for one ninety, so we have extra for signage, any of those things that might come up throughout. That's why we left that little buffer in there, but the company that sells is one ninety dollars.
That's great.
And I will add, I think there were two attachments that I did not. With you, I think I, I got them yesterday, it was just the warranty and nothing else that, uh.
We will sign it between.
Source book contract, whatever that, yeah.
I got both.
So I just make it that it's contingent on, on my.
Yeah, of course.
Of it, okay, yes, of course. Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash one-six. A resolution authorizing the Marion City Clerk as representatives of the city of Centon, Arkansas. To enter to a purchase agreement with American Wrap Company, Joplin, Missouri, for the purchase of a pump track. For Centon Parks and Recreation.
Somebody make motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixteen.
I'll say.
And we have a second. Roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette.
Yes.
Justin Cowger.
Yes.
He thinking about them.
Yes, sir.
Josie Reed. Darren Warren.
Yes.
And Miss Deanie.
All right, that takes care of ordinances and resolutions. And, uh. Josh is already up here. So every, every year in our budget, we always put seasonal employees in there for, for, uh. Probably works for helping with grass cutting stuff in the summertime. So that, that's what he's asking for to, uh, add. Or maybe do you have anything else, sir?
I mean, I did it like the mayor said, we do two seats every year that the moment we eat and so the other guys can basically keep up with, keep up with the track, the. Parks, the ball fields and everything. Last year I did not get any seasonals. Um, and somehow this slipped through that we didn't get it back in there. I am shooting again to shoot for two more seasonals. All dependent on if I can get kids to come in and help. Um, and this is not for the splash pad. This is to separate. This is different.
Mowing and stuff.
Mowing and weeding is seasonal. It's usually late April or it's Mayish to Labor Day around there. And then no insurance, no nothing, just seasonal mow and weedy, and then that's it.
Sixteen last year or we, we were doing thirteen, weren't we?
I believe thirteen was your splash pad. I think seasonal for mowing was fifteen or sixteen now. I know with the sellers that I'll have to go back and.
Wonder if that's going to help you attract.
I hope so. Um. Trying to find people to help nowadays is nice.
That's hard.
And it is, it's hot, out hot in the sun. But even heat mowing weeding, but.
We grow is true enough.
We're see, that's the issue. I mean, I do. That's something we can look forward to on if we want to do more seasonals or if we want to do more full times. And that's something we, I got to wait for the winter months and everything else. Do it where I can keep full time and start a seasonal, yes. Um, I don't want to lay anybody off or let anybody go, of course, but seasonal makes it easier on the full time guys. So they can spend more time on basically the major.
Saying as we grow, does it, you know, do we need? Maybe instead.
Something we could look at. Well, hopefully we'll see how this year goes. If I can actually get seasonal. And they're good ones. Then yeah, we can shoot them extra. Make it easier on us because I would like to make more, the plan better for just mowing right away and put more time on the parks and establishment, basically.
It is making it a little easier with having the subdivision. Of their own.
That takes time off of us because I, those are big attention pawns and they take over an hour by themselves.
We can throw some more to the subdivisions, let us. Any more questions for Josh? Something to approve the two seasonal. All in favor? Anyone? Anyone opposed? All right, Edgar, you're up again. This will be your last time.
I think this is my last time.
Your last time.
Well, thank you. Hopefully I got to see my, my memo. Um, I am intending on incentivize our employees to obtain a C D O. Bring them in is, uh. Like this past snowstorm, uh, we only have four guys that can operate dump trucks and, uh, start, uh, cleaning the roads. And with only four guys and five trucks available, it's kind of hard to keep them twenty-four seven running. So I'm trying to get them to get their C D O so they can, the rest of the guys can help us offset some of these guys, uh. That's just one of the, one of the examples, but on day to day operations, all those trucks should be out in field working. Whether it's hauling, uh, equipment or it's hauling, uh, gravel, dirt, uh. X, Y, and Z stuff. Sometimes we need to help out other departments pull debris out. The case may be. Coming from Fort Smith, that was a big issue as trucks get bigger, we're purchasing bigger trucks and stuff. It was, uh, nobody wanted to volunteer. So we made it mandatory to where. Eventually we gave them a year to get it, get their C D Os. If not, the option was to let them go. Did have a volunteer and I do have five guys who. As of today, all five of the guys that volunteered, uh, do have their, uh, C O P, which is their commercial, uh, learner's, learner's permit. So they are there. So we are down to a total of, you could say nine, uh, we are working in-house for them to. Get the, uh, pre-trip inspection, the air brake testing and the walk around, and then we'll be moving into the, uh. Driving course and stuff like that. So. At the end, they will probably be with nine guys with the C D O by the end of hopefully the next month or so. Uh, I am trying to push for a dollar reason being it's because there's a lot of legal behind it. The backstory and I'm being straight up, right, is that these guys were driving without a C D O. These trucks that are in violation. So. Me coming in and on the backstory, I immediately put a stop to it. I said, it's not going to be an accident under my watch with you guys breaking the law. So that is the backstory. That's why I brought this to attention. And, uh, that it was priority, however, uh, it's kind of been one of those that I needed to do my homework on it properly. So, and the guys are pretty excited that they're being able to cross train and pull equipment and do other things, you know, and, and works up. So. That's my deal with it.
We're covering the cost of all testing.
Yes.
And it on city time to.
Yes, everything, everything's been handled. All the guys got to do is now just go take pretty much their, uh, driving part. And, uh, like today was a rainy day, uh, work was limited. So they were doing in-house training. They were, they were doing learning. Around providing all the, we have the equipment, we're providing all the information for them to be successful in that matter. And we do have, we did budget twenty thousand for, uh. For C D O training. However, I believe with, uh, once we get with Carl, I should be able to. Remove that at, uh, remove that line item and rename it to C D O incentive pay, which will kind of balance out because. If we got nine employees with a C D O for dollars and forty hours with fifty-two weeks. It comes out to twenty grand, which is where we're budgeted at.
I was going to ask you where you came up with this, or is that a?
That's, uh, that's actually what Bentonville does. That's what Fayetteville does, Fort Smith does. And that's also looking into the future because we don't have a proper scale setup. Uh, so kind of like the guys come in and I'm speaking for Bentonville, Fayetteville, Springville, Fort Smith. That, you know, you get your guys in, but you know, they get in there, they're about thirteen, fourteen, fifteen bucks an hour. The first year they get their C D O, that's a buck. Then I think the next year they get another incentive and then they're like. Equipment operator, one, two, three, and then moving up to a, uh, equipment operator senior. Unfortunately, we can't do that because we don't have that big of a department, but offering them this incentive at least. Makes them look forward to some because we have had a couple of interviews. And it kind of is unfortunate that we'll tell them they're eager to learn and, and you know, they, they're positive and they want to move up the ladder. And we're like. That's not a possibility, but here's what we can offer. So that's hopefully in the future, we'll, we'll establish that.
Uh, one more question. Um, so down here in your incentive pay, will this, where it talks about, you know, violations and things like that. Will that be updated in the employee handbook?
Uh, yes, Justin's actually already taken that into consideration. She will be doing, uh, random drug testing as part of the federal.
Okay, yeah.
She'll be taking care of that as well. Uh, we are already providing our, our driver license. So she'll, I think she already did a few of them. Uh, so yeah, she'll, she's already tinkered.
I was figuring that's probably going to be an amendment to the handbook.
And, and as we, like I said, as we progress, uh, it'll probably eventually. Be a job requirement. We already have in the works of probably hiring a guy that already has a C D O. So we'll be looking into making that a requirement. You know, obviously respecting the guys that already been here and respecting what grandfather they meant and not forcing to obtain it, but. The next employees may be required to get it.
Well, I do like the fact that if they want it. That is an incentive for them. They'll get it and get that extra dollar. I think that's great.
Absolutely. And, and our guys were very overwhelmed. I must say during the snowstorm and, uh, I think that's an understatement to be honest.
I appreciate your, uh. Appreciate your transparency also.
I will have to have, uh, uh. Medical examination too.
No, we're, we're exempt. Yes, we're exempt as a municipality. Yep, we're, we're interstate and not interstate. So we're exempt from that. Only thing we're referring to is deal to the drug screen.
So my only thoughts are he's looking for a dollar an hour. So once we add a dollar onto a person's base pay. And then we say we're going to get people a four percent merit raise. You got to know that four percent impacts that one dollar versus we looked at. Flat fee of say fifty dollars per pay period, then that fifty dollars didn't, didn't go up four percent a year. You know, he's saying that, okay, we're going to move twenty thousand dollars from training to twenty dollars, basically not incentive pay. That becomes twenty thousand dollars that goes to their salary. So we just got to take into account if it's. You know, ten people, you have your typical two thousand eighty hours per year, so twenty thousand dollars. In four percent.
They get four percent.
And another four percent, then another four percent, and that grows pretty quickly after a couple of years that people become. Popped out maybe pretty quickly or, you know, just got to think about how that's going to impact us. A couple of years from now that we just added twenty thousand and twenty thousand, uh, whatever four percent is at. But and then another four percent. So, uh, did we want to do a dollar an hour or do we want to do a base rate? Uh, if you get your C D L, we'll give you fifty dollars per period, which is a hundred dollars a month. Yeah, that's less than. A dollar, because that's be a hundred and sixty dollars a month versus, but. I don't know, just, just my thought that if we got to look past this, this year, this year, not that expensive.
Worst case scenario, if they get a four percent merit increase, right? Because they, I mean, it should. Right? Worst case merit is four percent.
You're giving fifty dollars. Yeah, he's just asked for a dollar an hour, it's only forty dollars. So you're still, you're dealing better.
Okay, you're doing better. You're better, your deals better.
Eighty hours per pay period.
You can say fifty hours though. I get paid every week.
Okay, I didn't realize. Every two weeks.
So I get paid every week.
You get paid every week. It took y'all six weeks. Cut me a check. Come on now.
You got your capital check, right? Anyway.
So, okay, so. You know, it's not, I'm just saying, I'm just giving that as an example, okay, an example. I'm just one person speaking. I'm just trying to think long-term, past one year, you know, so.
I think in the long run, it's going to be worth the money spent because. I know that there was some people that. Playing in about their roads not getting graded. If you don't have enough people that are licensed to do it. Roads aren't going to get, and I mean, I'm not complaining. My street didn't ever get the, the one above me and the one below me did, but that's okay. You know, it's not a, mine's not a thoroughfare. Now, D Street got, I. I know they tried to keep it cleared and it was impossible, but, uh, I think in the long run. If you give the incentive out there, we're going to have the people. Take that incentive.
Against it. I'm for, I'm for an incentive.
But I think it's worth it in the long run. Because, I mean, it's the same, it's the same thing with the body point. You know? You can, you can sign on and be an E M T the whole time. The incentive is out there to get your paramedic. And more and more, more and more of the guys are going to get the paramedics of this. That's where the money is. So anytime you put in incentive out there, you can, number one, you can see. And I might, I might be sounding negative here, but you're going to be able to find out who's going to want to improve. Or who's going to want to sit on the bottom rung. Who's going to want to climb the ladder? Who's going to just want to be the second up space? So anytime we have an incentive out there, I think that's the best thing we can do. And if you start taking. Some of the incentive away, I think you're going to lose in the long run. I think we've talked about, uh. The incentive for. Even, you know, the police department for everybody for getting.
Certifications and.
Exactly. So I mean, if we do, if we do this for this, then we're going to have to go back and do all of the others and drop them. Because it's not fair. We've not done this in the past. So, I mean, in my opinion, I'm saying, I think it's a great idea. I wish that we could for more, but, but. And I know what it costs to get a license. I mean, look at the. Misty, you can, you can vouch for this. Look at the bus drivers. All the schools now basically are going to where they're paying all of the cost also to get.
To get their C D O, yes. But they also have to do it on their own time.
Well, they're not full-time associates either.
Yeah.
And to add on, this is how this, these guys are, are like you said, this incentive, they're going on their own time too. They're studying on their own time. Right now, like I said, it was just a, a slow day, but they're studying at home. They're doing all this at home. They're just coming to work with a smile on their face where they're getting it going. And, uh, the law did change, uh, so as of February of last year, now they have to take a course. Uh, and, uh, what is it? Uh, Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration changed that. So now I have to go through these costly courses and they've all passed them successfully. They, they all done that. So. They jumped all the proper hoops now. So now it's just kind of like, hey, you guys are doing well and we're proud of you guys. Let's keep it going.
I want to just say thanks for going to bat for your guys. I want to make a motion. We got more questions? I'm sorry.
Thank you for doing the right thing.
Yes.
By saying, hang on a second. Whoa. That's good. I appreciate that.
I want to make a motion. I'll make a motion for, for the dollar an hour. Second, an incentive.
Second.
Let's do a roll call of that.
Misty Elon.
Yes.
Darren Warren.
I support the incentive pay and I'm going to vote yes, but I think we should look at. Flat. Amounts. Because other departments are going to look at this too. Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
He thinking about them.
Yes, sir.
Justin Cowger.
He still there?
Amy Rochette, while we're waiting for Josh.
He shows there. You, you're, so you got five yeses, right?
Yes.
We'll call just one more time. Make sure you just, I, he did, heard you.
Justin Cowger.
Okay, we got five. We're good.
I'm going to thank you guys for considering all of our stuff. I know it's. All, everything that we've purchased right now is our big purchases, but they're all budgeted. Big capital statement and probably hopefully you won't hear much of us anymore for the year. And Darren, to answer your question, I'm sure we'll work towards implementing the requirements and. A legitimate cap off for our guys at some point. So that'll be a discussion for Carl and myself and Darren and our guys. So what we'll take it all into consideration. Thank you, guys.
All right, next. Is approval of a moving permit. I can't say this person's name, but this is located at seven, eight, 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 or moving it to seven, eight, 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 human road. I'm sorry, Ford Road, Ford Road. Uh, there was a public hearing at the last planning commission meeting on February seventh. He actually came with two requests and, uh, they've only approved one. And this is, this is the one they did approve. The other one was tabled or turned out. You know, you could do one.
Because they have to do a lot split.
Here, and I left this in there for you. Here, here's what the land looks like. The area. And here's the trailer. He wants to relocate. Where is it moving?
Shell, mom. Shell knob, Missouri.
My question is if it's agricultural and there's an existing house already there. You move another residence on there, that becomes multifamily. Is that a lot allowed with the A one zoning district?
Has a provision for accessory dwelling. So that's being considered since re dwelling unit. And that's why the. Second request for the, uh, local homeowner is denied for. Table, they, they until he put a lot. He also still has to get, uh, A D H approval for, you know, septic.
But I know Robbie left and Robbie talks. But I know Robbie left and Robbie talks about important issue, uh import teen. An issue, and this looks like a code enforcement nightmare about to happen.
Found that also, and so we have provisions in the conditional use. Um approval that should it not meet. The requirements to be habitable, that they will have to remove it within. I think ninety days, ninety or were, I think ninety.
It was sixty, sixty or ninety, I thought I said sixty.
So if it's not remodeled and livable within nine or sixty days, they have to remove it.
Once it's determined that it's inhabitable, that it cannot. Make it up to to building code, building fire codes, then the fire department or uh building safety. Would state that it's inhabitable, it cannot meet the requirements and then.
You said this coming from Shell knob?
That's what it says. Where it's located.
It's like an hour and a halfway, I mean.
One from Prairie Grove and one from Shell knob and they had to switch.
Right.
I'm not sure about this one.
Yeah, this was. The other one.
Just because it was bigger.
It'll be interesting to see if it makes sense.
You follow up at the next meeting?
And and the planning commission did, did recommend approval of this, or recommended us for approval.
Yeah.
I guess by the way, the codes written, we still have to approve these. Any more questions? And make sure we do get the bonds before it moves, I agree with them. Alright, so like make a motion to approve the moving permit.
I'll make the motion.
We got a motion, we have a second? We have a second, Amy?
Second.
We'll call that one too.
Okay. Mister Elon.
Yes.
Darren Warren.
No, and I'm voting no, because this looks to be a life hell safety issue to me.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Keep thinking about them.
Yes, sir.
Justin Cowherd. Amy Rosette.
No.
Still passage? So would you knock out three to two?
Bill, Bill, I'm here.
Okay, what's your vote?
I mean, it looks like an absolute code enforcement nightmare to me, I'd say no.
Guess it leaves me and I'm gonna vote no. Is that right? I left, I got three, three.
Yeah, right.
So we'll vote no, any comments, anybody? Okay. Alright, moving on. Okay, so next is accepting resignation. Renovations of Justin Rushing and Nate Vice from the Senate Parks Recreation Advisory Board. So I made a motion to. You cut those?
Then.
We got a motion, we got a second?
Second.
All favor? And the opposed? Alright, next is. Approved changes to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board bylaws. Looks like the changes, Joshua, I'm right here, is in red. I think Joshua will come talk about it, he's kind of overseeing that with with them.
Uh we didn't change a whole lot, there's actually like said only two or three things, the number of members done from nine to seven. And they are doing, instead of meeting the Monday before city council, we're meeting the week before city council on Monday and from six thirty to six. That was the only two changes that were in the regulations of the bylaws of the change. Uh they are wanting to stay with seven, because if you do a vote, there's an odd number, that way you have, don't have an even number.
Then they got there distributing minutes within three days.
Yes, that is going to be.
That's been an issue, I've talked about, not him, but.
I hammered them pretty hard on that and. I'm learning for me and moving in that position, figuring out what's going on, uh and last week I. It's gonna be fixed, as I'll say.
Alright. Any questions? I'll make motion and accept the bylaw changing.
I'm moved.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We want to poll. I'm over here second. Alright, next is a purchase of uh protective vest for the police department. And good captain will give us an update and tell us where the money's coming from, we want to know that.
So what this is um is actually new gear for the SWAT team, so we have twelve members on the SWAT team currently. Um the issue that we have right now is I think about ten of the twelve. Um are already expired vests, the other two will be expired this year, but the same gear that. Technically is not gonna be safe, you know, I mean, is it still gonna probably perform? Yeah, but the manufacturer's not gonna stand behind it or anything if an injury or an officer did get shot on a duty. Kind of opens opens us up to. Some legal issues if something bad were to happen, so uh what my proposition is here, these uh. TCOs who we are getting our current, that's like the ones that the officers wear under their uniforms or even the over ones day to day. Um, one thing I like about them is they do go right off um the Arkansas State Contract Crotte Team, so um you know, there's not. I really don't benefit, you know, I've I've checked around and looked at other um places to buy different vests, they're always. Being on state that, I mean, they're always, I mean, pretty much about as low as we get it, um. So I do like using them as a vendor, um that's who we get our firearms from, or at least our glocks. And everything else have been a good vendor to us, um the big benefit of this, I'm asking y'all to approve the the fifty seven thousand. Uh seven fifty two ninety three, but we do have equipment, safety grant that we apply for the police department, we got a hundred thousand awarded. Um that is specific for ballistic vests and cameras and camera storage, so I'm just asking to use fifty seven thousand of that. For this, and I'll probably have other items, and I'm kind of new at research on what other safety items. Um that we need, and then what's left, we will be able to apply towards our current Axon agreement if we have money left, so. Um shouldn't be any problem to spend it up, um because we are having to add on. More cameras for the new positions that are coming on this year, I'm just kind of waiting, because until those folks are hired. A little bit closer to the next academy, I just don't want to spend the money right now before we even have the spots, so I'm kind of holding that. Um before we get the ball going rolling on that, but after we get the safety equipment, I feel like that's more. Um necessity since we already have approved funds for Axon, once we get our safety stuff and what I. Would any time that we would have left, then I would apply toward Axon, and that's, that's my plans for the grant. Um and this will just get us back up to speed with our with our safety equipment, um these are multi-hit. Um panels, so some of them, there are some that are rated a little bit higher, but they're only single hit, so you have one. Basically one shot, they're done, these here, um they're level three S plus, so that means, you know. Pretty much high-powered rifles, uh three ways and stuff, they can handle multiple rounds without, it's a very good material, um they're much. The the weight of the actual overall kit is much lighter than what we're used to, so it's gonna help us out, our kids are just. They're outdated, um the downfall is any ballistic material like this, other than steel is only five-year warranty. Which with that is the five-year expiration. When it's a day, you know, a day past that warranty expiration, it's still going to work, it's just that manufacturer's not gonna stand behind it. Um so um we only get five years out of this, fortunately, we have the grant to pay for that, but. Um so we are, we are lapsed on our safety kits and uh just uh. You know, I feel like safety is the most important thing that we can invest money into, so that'd be my, my ask is to to use part of that grant to fund.
So this, but oh, sorry, Amy, go ahead, will this put all officers?
This will get.
New vest?
All of our other police officers that are not on the SWAT team, so this is twelve, all the other officers, everybody. On their day-to-day vest that they wear with their uniform, we're all good on those, we replace those as needed. Um you know, we budget for those yearly, like, I think this year's like seven officers are up, um so that's kind of a separate deal. This one here specifically our SWAT team, um that you'll see.
Else is in, in.
Else is good, and once they may end up adding, um we do have active shooter kids that every officer is issued. Um and that's kind of, you know, if we had a worst-case scenario, there was an active shooter in a building. Um it is additional armor that they can put on over their soft stuff, so we do have that for patrol as well. Um their helmets and such are expired, so I may end up using part, you know, requesting at a later date to. Outfit some of the officers with more of that gear, but as far as this goes, this is a full kit. From helmet all the way down, groin protector, um the comfort button, which is right here. It would put them, you have your ten by twelve plates here, but everything else is still ballistic material. So um collar, um shoulder pads, it's. Pretty much about as outfitted as you can get and still be movable enough to really do the job, but with wider weight, it's gonna help a lot right now. Um and it gets kind of difficult, the old steel plates, um so they don't really. They work really good, but they're probably double the weight and you know, pack around that stuff for several hours, a typical search warrant, we don't get out there five, six hours. You're already, when you're packing around that much weight, it's just hard on the officers um health-wise and it just fatigues everybody, so that's. I do, this isn't the highest end, but I feel like this is a good um for the amount of times that our teams deploy. If we were a full-time team or even like the sheriff's office going out more, you know, I may look at something a little higher. Um I feel this is a good median, um that would suit our needs for what our department needs here.
With this in in our budget, and I know you said the grant, but.
Good question, um Amy, actually, we did budget for these aside from um the grant. And we happened to get the grant, so um specific for that, so that will actually allot those those funds that. If we need it, you know, for for other things, or may use some of that to outfit patrol with what we need for those active shooter kids, but. Um the good news is, is we already did have money allotted aside in the budget, um but with us getting awarded that grant. It gave us the two categories that it can be used for, and that's um the ballistic vest and then and or the camera. It's category eleven and category fifteen, and that's what the two are, um so.
You want to use the grant first for this, for these ones, okay, except I don't remember this, but I remember the other.
That's correct.
Other ones, but I didn't remember these ones, okay.
You're absolutely correct, um the grant was just kind of, you know, we walked out and we got it worked. Really a partial from what we asked for, we could get a hundred thousand, so. Um and since it is specific to those categories, I do think it'd be in the city of best interest that we do use. Uh you know, for this purchase here, we use part of that grant towards it, that way the.
Us for the other.
Or anything else that we may need, I just think it'd make a little more sense, because we're so locked down in those two categories, we're kind of put in a box. Um with a hundred thousand, we can, and we definitely do have a need for it, um I just want to make sure we don't give any kind of grant funds back. And that we, that we use it, that does, and that helps us out too, I mean, there are some cities talking with um the state. That have turned in, you know, had to turn money back and stuff, I do feel like you're less likely to get awarded. Um you know, you might not get as much next time, but well, they gave you a hundred thousand, but you used. Fifty seven, you didn't spend it on anything, so why do we want to, so and that was partial, so I think it's important we spend that. Um but I don't feel like we'll have any. Trouble doing so, because we do have the Axon contract, so if we come to the point of we have the safety equipment we need. We can apply that towards what our yearly funding is, which is also already budgeted, but that just helps us, I feel, go more in the green on our on our general fund.
And and I'm, I'm just gonna add, I have to bring this to you, because it's over twenty thousand. So if it's under twenty thousand, we wouldn't be coming to you, but it is over twenty, that's over my spending limit, so all that has to be approved by the council by. And it is on the state contract, like you said, it's right inside, that's why they bring your resolution, because they they noted it right inside the invoice.
Now this is, I mean, such a pricey, I mean, I do think it's important that. Y'all are aware of the money is being spent toward, um what it's for, and just kind of, you know, a little bit more insight, just on what that actually is. Um but it is, I mean, good gear, definitely needed. Um I know it's, you know, me being a commander over this SWAT team, I'll definitely feel much better knowing that they're in, you know, a lot better. Uh quality equipment is, if we're ever faced with a bad, you know, bad scenario, someone did get shot in line of duty, but. I definitely feel a lot better in this than what we're running right now, so. Um and while I'm up here, maybe I can just kind of give you a a couple of brief updates. To um animal shelter wise, we've made two hires, two kennel tags, one uh. Is gonna, was actually Sarah, who was already a city employee, she's gonna be moving out there, um we hired a um a gentleman. Andrew Andrew from the Centerton Animal Hospital, he'll be starting Tuesday next week. That'll just leave our clerk position, hopefully, we need to post it five days internally, we have two people. One person outside that's already interested, one person internal, but we gotta get some interviews done on that, we'll get that going. Adoption event this Saturday again, um we'll have the flyers and stuff going out. If we didn't get it done this evening, it'll be tomorrow, um volunteer waiver I got to uh Rabel. Got that approved um for, we're gonna start allowing volunteers come in and help us. I just want to get our new hire staff kind of trained a little bit. Um and where we're flowing a little bit uh better with our new hires before we start. Um trying to train citizens, um just, I want to get the ball rolling a little bit more steady, a little bit more on track before we. Uh bring in other people to, you know, kind of help us train, um so hoping to the near future will be able to do that, we do have a. Pretty long list of people willing to help, um and I just want a huge shout out to several members, um. You know, of city staff that we have, I mean, city hall, the PD, um Sarah, our custodian. Um so we've had help, our department has helped us fairly, um I mean, everybody's kind of come in to help us with. You know, this whole project and getting things up and going, um and it definitely doesn't go unnoticed by me or staff out at the shelter. Um so a huge shout out to those um that helped with that, and I mean, it's really been, we have struggled manpower-wise and it made it possible to keep going. I mean, we've been averaging forty dogs right now, we're in maximum capacity. Uh with the weather that we have, it doesn't know if it wants to be sunny or if we want to be eighteen degrees, um but right now, we're not, you know, keeping any outside. And due to the weather fluctuating so much, um it's it's tough, because we just don't have. We don't have places for the for the animals to go, so we can do our duties, we we're out of places, so we are um. It's really quite the chore right now, so I've never seen us that full, but winter, we typically go up, because they're a lot more active, they're not moving around. Um with the economy going down, I think you get a lot more people dumping them and stuff, um. Our last adoption event, we did um adopt out ten, but on Monday, I think we took in seven. And it's, it's kind of that revolving, you know, revolving deal, um. I wanted to touch on the contracts with K Springs and Hyphol, in those contracts, you've probably already seen it, but it's worth mentioning. We do have the right to refuse if we're at capacity, I don't think that after Benneville gets their own stuff up and going, that we'll ever be that high again, because. Now I say seventy-five percent of our antics are Benneville dogs, so. Uh I don't think we'll ever be at that, but with these contracts, we do have the right to refuse if we're at capacity, and I just think that's worth noting. The way it doesn't put us um in a position of what are we gonna do with them? Um as far as the projects and stuff going, we're hoping the weather getting a little better, we can really kind of get that remodel going. As far as equipment wise, we've got, I've got a lot of equipment that is in place out there, working well. Um and you know, other ideas to come, but I'm, I do think that we're moving in a forward direction, um and it's just. You know, it's been kind of a slow process, but um I do feel like we're moving in the right direction and and things, we're gonna just continue to get. Um going better and smoother as time goes on, um but and I appreciate y'all, the patience and. From the council and the citizens and everybody just kind of supporting us through that, um because it's been a lot of work.
Have dog food with all those dogs?
Yeah, so um yeah, I actually went and got another, uh went and got another load of dog food. Kind of switched up a little bit, I got some for small breeds, some for puppies, some for adult. It was thought pretty good, this weekend, we are gonna post a list of things that we we could use adoption wide, or you know, not adoption wide, but. Donation wise for the dogs, we're gonna get that posted with that um flyer, and that way if someone does contribute, then that'd be um something.
Be nice with all the suppliers in this area, you know, maybe we could find some.
I've been looking, I just haven't had an. I've been looking, I just haven't had any luck with anybody calling me back. So um chief is. I had, I got to visit with him for about two hours last Thursday. He's been pretty good, and he's been talking with the show science diet. On at least the scheduled delivery, and that's what that human cabin does and a few other channels. So at the minimum, we'll be doing something like that because I think we can get a better rate if we're on a drop off um schedule. So we're looking at that option. Um, but it would be nice to maybe partner with somebody. I just haven't had any luck with any vendors or anybody with the authority to. Those decisions, um be able to contact me, but he's doing well, and I think that he anticipates on coming back light duty in the next few weeks. So. That's all I have for y'all.
Any any thoughts on if we're gonna, if Bentonville's seventy-five percent of our dogs and they're gonna have their own shelter by the end of this month?
Yeah, they will.
I'll tell you. Any thoughts on staffing and that?
Tell you what my concern right now, I mean, I'll be honest, we don't have enough employees even at full staff. Um, you know, even at full staff at the capacity we're running right now, um, I think I'll still have to have volunteers, whether it be from other departments. Whatever, because um we're kind of, when when we're at minimum here, we're not really able to go handle the bark and dog complaints. And the smaller things because our necessities have to be covered first. So things are getting put off longer than I would like. They're not emergencies, they're not any kind of wellness concerns or anything. It's the small things like a bark and dog complaint. Or whatever, but I'm not able to get our ACOs out on the road to patrol and to look for things like that of their, you know, on their own. We're right now, we're strictly react reactive because we are so short staffed. Um, so I think that our staff would be well utilized. Um, and and that's just because right now, I mean, truthfully, I could probably use two for kennel tags. Um, because it's taken average, I mean, it's taken a full day plus a little bit. I mean, we're definitely paying out overtime right now. Um, to to get the job done, and it's just, there's really no way. When we're that full, there's really no way to do it any quicker because we just don't have the place to actually take them and put them while we clean each of the individual places.
Pay for a kennel tag?
Uh, it's sixteen dollars. It's just a little over like sixteen oh eight. And it is, I mean, it is definitely a dirty job. I've been out there. Witnessed it, done it myself. Lieutenant has helped greatly. He's been out there every weekend. Um, so. It is, it's nasty. I mean, I'm not gonna lie, it's nasty. Um, but I do think we'll have two kennel tags, two ACOs, and an adoption specialist. Um, you know, I I think we're probably gonna hover around fifteen to twenty dogs, probably as our city. Um, that's still a pretty good chore, even for two people back there, but. With the way that our schedule's gonna rotate, I would like to keep, you know, at least two people there. Right now, we have days that we only have enough staff to. You know, one person out there, one person can't do that job right now. So I think that we'll be right about the amount that we need to be. But I feel like we'll also be to where we can really go out there and explore all the avenues to get these animals homes. Um, we've. We have some volunteers that have helped us um with the Facebook stuff, our part time, that's way over there. She's been a phenomenal duck. It's working now that we have. So once we get full time people, they don't have to rely so much on, you know, those folks. Because we'll have people full time that can do those jobs, and we'll be doing it, you know, all day. We'll be promoting those dogs. Um. I think that we can help spread our word, which we can make it a lot further. That way we don't have them. We've had some that's been there since September. You know, now a lot of our older residents, they are getting adopted out now because we're doing sponsor, you know, we're getting them off views, we're doing those things. Um, freeing up the time for the employees to effectively be able to market that. Um, what we have going on, that's gonna be in lower numbers. We're gonna be able to do a lot of the much needed modifications. Right now, we probably, realistically, we couldn't even do a lot of the updates we want to do. We don't have any place. I mean, we're. We don't have no place to move them to do modifications. So that's kind of why we've been on standstill um on some of that. I just want to get up to staff. We can start really helping here. I don't know how big Bentonville's facility is, um, but I I hope it's pretty good side.
I've already told we twenty kennels. Somebody told me twenty.
Realistically, with Tony, we're gonna be able to house, you know, you need to have a kennel to move.
That's their deal though.
But that's kind of where we're in it. Um, pretty, pretty satisfied as well. Actually received several compliments from citizens and stuff that have been out there and have been chatting with those animal staff. Um, and that's, you know, they might actually go a real big one uh Monday and. Um, there's a lot more to go along with that than they really did at us, but their family is really pretty. And um, they're doing like the. Um, we have a tragic situation on their side, um, but they have a lot of good things to say about both the officers and the man and the staff. Um, in a bad situation, and I mean, that's that's what we want to do. So I do feel with with those things, we're. So we're not getting complaints, um, we're getting those compliments. And you know, I'll smile every year every time I hate those. So we're gonna keep on, you know, keeping um doing what we're doing. Yeah, I think we gotta get playing together and with our new staff. Um, Sarah has been really instrumental in coming up with ideas for the design of the facility. Um, and just really good ideas to kind of help, you know, get out there. I think everybody putting their heads together so that we can really make this. Flow a lot better. And um, it's all about getting our work out there. And and we gotta get those little faces seen the way somebody wants to. Taking part of their family. Um, get it out there that no one knows they're there. That's that's what's important. So. Uh, does anybody else have any questions for me?
Getting back to the vests, um, what's the turn time when you call and order this? How soon will they be here?
Talked to Paul, our rep, um, yesterday when he was up here, he said that he can get the order placed and sized. By the fir- probably about the first week of March. And then our turn turn time on those are usually six to eight weeks. Usually about typical on ballistic material and good night. So um, it's. Not real fast, but it's better than what it was during COVID. We were waiting a long time for ballistic uh material. So. Um, I can just pay, we'll get it, you know, realistically, probably eight weeks from now.
Well, the other question I've got is on this contract that you got here. Um, it says good through and it's two nine.
You know, he'll honor the pricing. Um, I've actually got an updated one, but it was only for eleven vests. But he said the pricing being stated contract, it's gonna be the same as long as we act. It's it's good for the year. So or for the fiscal year the contract goes on. Um, and quick update too on the Tahoe's, you all approved. Uh, my touch base with Superior, uh Gary, our rep over there, they're slotted for production. This is the white, whatever reason, the white all wheel drive or four wheel drive ones are. Not the first one. I think they knew all the two wheel drive and they got a bunch of black, but we want the white. I'm like, no, reiterate it. We want white, so it goes with our fleet. He said, you you'll get them. They're just not in production right now. They're slotted there. So not a hundred percent sure when we'll actually see them on the lot. Um, but there's, we don't have it quick right now. We will definitely get them this year. So I'm not too concerned with Chevrolet. Um, he has some other options on the lot, but price wise. It would not benefit us to go into um another vehicle that with. Another style of vehicle like the Durango's that currently I I have three of those go down in one day. We can't wait. So um, I granted they're under warranty. My concerns are is point seventy, eighty thousand miles on these, no problem. Um, so I feel more comfortable sticking with the Tahoe's. We save, think with the numbers of of the ones that they had in stock, their Hemi Durango's, we don't want to be saving a handful of money like between five, six thousand. I think we're much better off to stick with what we have coming, and we've already approved. Um, but I didn't want to let y'all know why we don't have them here right now. It's just, we're just waiting for the production. So I don't, I don't have any concerns, you know, I just think it may be another month or so before they, we kind of get through the process. If you'll have any questions, you know, any. Uh, very available cell phone email. Anybody have any questions or need anything, just reach out and I'll help you out.
For that, would somebody make motion to approve the purchase of the vest here as presented for fifty-seven thousand? Seven hundred and fifty-two dollars ninety-three cents on the Arkansas State bid.
Second.
Motion and a second, all favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? You're opposed?
No, there's a lag. I was saying, I great, great presentation, by the way, and really appreciate all you've done.
All right, last thing I got is to discuss, and I will do this briefly. Uh, discuss the city hall concept and then possible land that the city owns, and we maybe at some future point put a senior center on. So just to get a little backstory on this, I. Uh, our, in our budget, we did budget money to remodel the front part of the city hall. Uh, the council uh budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Of course, that's probably not gonna be enough, but but it'll get us started. But I did reach out to uh Dave Mars. We talked about him this little while ago about open up the mercantile right across the street.
Yes.
And, you know, he knew we were gonna try to do something with this, and he stated to me that when you do, why don't you let me know what you're doing? You know, because he might want to get involved in that project, especially the front of it, because he he would like to redo the front of it to make it more look like. The old downtown.
So he may want to actually do it. Yeah.
He said he would help. He never said he would do. Yeah, he didn't say.
That's what I mean, is it?
But but.
Financially help?
Yeah, I'm getting there.
TV show help?
I I that would help if he does on a TV show, but he, you know, we we just had initial conversation.
Bring more people up to.
Yep. So so we've had initial conversation. I took him over there. The first thing he wanted to do. And he's talked to me and Loreen about this already a couple of times. Is, you know, we've talked about it. They want to get a crosswalk there by the park. You know, down there by the Ravington, down at the end.
Yes.
They want to put a crosswalk. We had our dot out here before.
Yes.
And the sidewalk on the west side by the Ravington is privately owned. It's not owned by the city. It's owned by the. Uh, Mr. Mars told me, he talked to the owner of Ravington. And he said he's willing to do the work to make it ADA compliant. It has to be ADA compliant, is all he has to do. So he'll fix the sidewalk, the city can put the striping in, and they'll connect, you know, we'll put stripes across there. And it'll connect to our parking lot across the street. And our dot actually came out here. Was she came out last, you know, it was raining and stuff, but last week, during all this snow, she came out, me and her talked. And I told her what we, you know, want to do, and she's gonna send me some regulations. We gotta draw up a concept. And and send it to her, but it sounded like we could get it approved if they could make that one side there ADA compliant. He wanted it down by the steps by where the bakery is and come across, but I I don't think that's gonna be, it's too high up. But down on the end, it looks like it could, it could be done. So she's getting.
The end of the Ravington?
Yeah, yeah, right, right there was that first street, first street. And I, and then I also showed her the signs we have up there. We got signs of it right now. It's flashing. It shows, you know, like. They're not crossing, but.
A mile apart.
Yeah, but but we told her we like to reuse those. And, you know, maybe put the pedestrian signs in there, and she, you know, she's taking all those notes. While she was here, I also, just on a side note, we did have an accident out on highway seventy-two about three or four weeks ago. And I asked them to, you know, since there was fatality involved, I did ask to do a salary uh safety study. They were out here before, put all those signs up there, curve signs, everything else, but she was out here for that too. And I'll let the council know it. I don't know what else you do. Uh, you know, but but I did ask them, look, since there was fatality involved, so our dot will be out.
Great highway.
Somebody told me we should do that, but hey, anyway, so so back to this. Uh, so I took Dave over there. We went in the old city hall. You know, we were over there and we looked around and, you know, I I this, you know, he was talking about Sarah. As far as doing draws, Sarah drew this too. There was actually a couple of people coming to through some ideas, others, hey, here's what we'd like to do. And this is certainly not the plan. This is just a con, and it's been at a drop box. But this is just an idea. Uh, Dave did tell me, he liked the initial drawing. What he did tell me is he's got hold of an architect that works for him, and he's gonna draw this out for us with architect plans pro bono. We're not, we're not going to pay for that. Uh, actually, I indicated to him, I wanted to start. If we're gonna move forward, I want to start some kind of committee. You know, a few folks, uh, I did talk to Jenny, your name's Jenny, right? Yeah, okay, I talked to Jenny about it. Uh, because she came by and expressed the need for, you know, seniors and and so we've sat down and. You know, we've talked a little bit, and I want to include her on that, you know, get her input if we're gonna do this. The architect, and I'll get two or three more people involved, and we can get our heads together and see what we really want to do. Now. This is like, so this was Sarah, you know, Drew. Uh, you can see back here, one thing that we all heard a lot about is we want a library.
A what?
Library. I heard that so many times since I've, I've heard it ever since I lived here, not not just recently. Uh, so the idea, and Dave said he would probably build this for us.
Wow.
Uh, it's not, not the whole building, just a.
Right.
Just a small part of it, make more of a sharing library. You know, uh, when I met with Hadley with the Bentonville Library, she told me, go out, look at the one at the community center. They have a small little library out there. She said, that's probably what you can get away with.
Bella Vista, maybe?
No, no.
Community center.
Well, at the community center, they have a small library inside.
Oh, I haven't been in.
Yeah, she says, and she told me she'll help me with books and all that. She's, she's willing to help me. Uh, but the the idea is to maybe have a small library. This is up in the front. Again, we'll have an architect look at it, see what we really do, and I have to talk to Rob about code thing and, you know, all that. Uh, these vending machines, oh, that's just something with drawn in there. They'll have like this, if we, if we hire somebody at some point. Because, you know, if we want to do events and things in here for the seniors, everybody else, maybe we have a staff person that helps coordinate these these events, but that'd be, that's later. That's not right now. Uh, maybe we can all have some coordination there, work together.
Is that like a receptionist area?
Yeah. This is more like this little getaway space. This this is more like a little library thing. Again, this is just a idea that this is just thrown together.
I have a piano all day.
Here's, here's more to little library. You can sit in the area, have a little sitting areas in there. Some of this is might be a little out, out too much, but yeah, but it's there. But this will make Centerton, you want an identity? There it is.
A lot of Centerton history in.
Yeah, and again, this is just a quick concept, you know. Now, I showed him this coffee shop. No, because I actually had the guy from, you know, uh, Paul from the bakery say, you know, somebody like Lisa for coffee. Now, what Dave said on this, and he might help me spearhead it, is he said you should get some company. He named a couple of that's, you know, large in the area. He said, you should get the the coffee company to build this out. Have them build it out, then, you know, work out the lease details with them, you know, as far as, you know, and and I think he could help facilitate that. So he was excited at the end of the day. Uh.
Put a six brew in there.
Well, he's talked more like.
Six brew.
Six brew. Well, you know.
There's not quite as big as it sounds, but expensive.
Here, here's a little area like for kids. Like I said, I don't know if all this really fits in there.
Yeah, no, I have different ideas.
Yeah, just for, you know, while the parents in there reading a book or something. You know, they say call it skyscrapers, they really happen in here, so.
Still, it's concepts.
This little, this is a little area.
Definitely something for the kids.
Yeah, here's the coffee shop again.
For the kids, but it requires good supervision.
Bill, I re- I really like the idea of six brew. I think that's gonna go along very well.
And and this coffee shop, I think would go more in the front part of the bill.
Yes.
I mean, I think this shows more in the back, but more in the front. But like, that's where we get the architect involved, we get committee, because I might have an idea. But then he might come and have a different idea, you all, so.
Need a flood manager to do work at the old city hall?
Yeah, yes.
Can I be on this?
Wine, wine tasting shop. Wine tasting shop, not only taste shop. You might be able to get that in the mercantile across the street. So, so anyway. And and this is just the front part. I mean, I think some point in time, we probably need to remodel that back part too, but. This is just an idea. I don't have a a a budget to work with. And I can get some other folks involved to help us with, like Dave helping with the library. Maybe we get somebody to do a coffee shop. The architect is pro bono. You know, maybe we can get something nice happening. Uh.
Couple of questions.
Yes, sure. So that's the idea. Uh, and actually, I did talk to Jenny. I told him also, and I've told him before. You know, that they can use that committee room all during the week. I mean, you know, they want to go in there, cook, there's kitchen back there. I don't know, we already got to go back and look at, we were going to go there, but you said you've been there before. Plus, she's gonna look when we go to coffee bar next week. He's gonna, or this week, she's gonna look it over, and I'm gonna show her how to work the coffee and all that, but. Um, and then after this, I did ask Dave too, I said, what do you think about? You know, because I I told him, I've been approached, well, I didn't got approached, I just read it on Facebook. Uh, you know, about needing a senior center, and I agree with that. I'm a senior myself. I'll, you know, I'm over the fifty-five. And I'm gonna retire someday. So what Dave said, because I told him, we have some land. We do have a nice piece of land. Cause I told him, we have some land. We do have a nice piece of land running the street. Five seventy-seven Main Street, it's about three quarters of an acre. It's wooded, you know, and I'm, I, I can envision maybe it's sometime not in a new, you know. But he also gave me some ideas for that, but maybe sometime they put about two thousand square foot building back there. And actually, somebody told me to, they remind me about how the church was built. You know, it was a metal building.
Yeah.
And then they put, you know, brick stuff on the front. It looks, you know, that the Living Waters Church right across the street, it looks nice. So there's, there's some ideas there.
Yeah.
But, you know, you get a couple thousand square foot build, put it toward the back. You have playing room for parking, you know, and so. Uh, I, I, I at some point would like to maybe us, you know, maybe earmark that land for that. We're not doing anything else with it.
Why haven't we put like a park in or that? Like, how long have we owned that where we haven't?
We've owned it, but really there's just really no good access to it. There's no sidewalk there. You know, cause we were gonna put the Ventures Park at one time and that all came up, you know, about too long ago. But, you know, I actually took the parks wreck and they were just concerned because there was no sidewalk. Well, I'm thinking the seniors, they would probably drive there, most of them. And at some point that'll get wind and all that, so, but okay, I'm just trying to think ahead a little bit. Uh, I know the city probably has some projects we wanna do, like I think next year's budget, I told Carl. I wanted to add the second floor to this building over here, you know, try to budget for this, cause we're gonna need more space at some time in, in the future. But then maybe after that, maybe we can do this, but where I was saying, what Dave told me is on the. On the building, he said maybe some developer will build it for you. And, you know, and I thought of an immediate example. I used to work for a little trucking company down here in Lowell. This little company, you know, they got buildings spread out all over Lowell. Skyscrapers, everything, but they have a senior center name, you know, the people that own that. Made to see, they, they donate, so if we dedicate land, maybe some developer will say, you know, and and actually, you know, you, you never know. I mean, I just wanted to designate it anyway.
Why don't we ha- use the community room as? Senior.
I don't know, that's, yeah, I, I don't wanna just make it strictly seniors because we got a lot of people rent that. Lots of people, and it, you know, the community uses for birthday parties, weddings and all.
All I know, yeah, I'm just saying.
During the day, I told they can use every day, except Friday morning, we rented at the Schuber Mitchell. You know, for a meeting, they, they do a weekly meeting there. But it's there Monday through Thursday, seven eight.
They have other, other stuff.
And I would think, I, I, I don't know, I don't know how it works, but I would think senior activities may be more during the day. Cause I don't know, I'll just leave it at that. I mean, I don't know.
Am I allowed to talk?
You can speak for a minute.
I mean, I, I don't wanna keep you all.
Come on up to the podium, so they can hear you. Well, so Justin could hear you. He's got a. Yeah, talk, he had to hear you through that microphone.
I don't wanna keep you all night about it and all, but the thing that we're looking at and we're going and visiting a lot of other small area. Centers. Bentonville has a huge one, Rogers has a huge one. We're not looking at something like that. Swimming pools and pickleball courts and all of that. We would really like to get, right now. To designate two of the spaces that are sort of undesignedated in the building, in the renovation. That would be for seniors. The rest of the building, the library idea, the coffee shop, the little area for children, families, whatever. And the little computer area, those are great too, and seniors might take.
Sure.
Use of those, but we would like to have one room, not too big even, it wouldn't have to be very big. That could be designated where seniors know from Monday through Friday, or whatever time to whatever time. They can go, that room is open, they could do puzzles, games, cards, dominoes. Sit and chit chat, whatever, connect and help them. Maintain, you know, their brains, their bodies, everything else. And then a second room that we could use, and we're willing, I mean, we've got people on. In the group already and more people joining. I just had a lady tonight, as she's leaving, handed me her name and telephone number and said. Let me join your group. So. People to schedule in, in a secondary. Not the big area in the back on a daily basis, but a second room that would be ours. That would be, we could schedule craft classes, art lessons, exercise, different things like that, that. People would know, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, if you wanna go and do a painting class, it's at ten o'clock. If you wanna exercise, that's at one o'clock or something like that. The big area in the back is great for some of our activities we might want to hold. But that's one of the rooms, the big area and it's in the back. You have to go in, set up. Put up your tables and chairs, clean up, have it ready for whoever's renting it that night or something. We would like two of the little spaces in the front part to just be senior rooms. Then if people are working on a crossword puzzle, I mean, a jigsaw puzzle. And they don't finish and they wanna come back tomorrow, they could leave it out, you know, and the tables and the chairs not have to be. I mean, some of us, I could move some tables and chairs still, but some of us can't. And all, and this would not, this, the other thing I've learned too, visiting, I went to Grab it Tuesday. They don't allow people to come in, like they first had some families bring elderly people in wheelchairs. That moved independent and drop them off and say, I'll pick them up at five and think that it was caring.
Oh.
That they were gonna take care of them. They had to quickly stop that and say, you're welcome to bring. Mama, grandma, granddaddy, whoever, but you have to have a caregiver stay with them if they're not totally independent. We don't have facilities to help them in the bathroom. We can't, you know, and then some of them even were bringing, bringing people that had dementia.
Oh.
So they said that can't, you know, be sure you don't let that happen. But we're learning as we're going, so we don't have experience of this. I haven't. Other than I had been a member of Rogers Wellness Center. And take part in some of the classes because I used to live in Rogers. Um, but we have a lot of people and volunteers, like you're talking about having somebody staff. The desk to do. Events or different things, we probably could come up with volunteers to help. Staff something like that. You might still need somebody. Permanent, but you know, we've got a lot of people that are capable and willing and would love to help out or. Volunteer for the library area. Or something.
And like I told you when we met, you know, that's why I wanted you to be on my committee. I want your input too. And we go figure all this out, you know, it's like this, but you see on the screen, it's not, it does not lock there. This is just.
But it's, are we talking?
I think the whole building is about sixty-six hundred square feet. But I, I didn't measure this. I, I think she puts the dimensions on it, but I didn't measure it. She being Sarah, she would.
Kinda like having a, a couple of rooms here rather than building a whole new building, cause we've already got this. We have the front half, a small library and then.
And then we also, at some point, I don't know, I know Lorene's probably gonna shoot me, so I don't wanna talk too loud, but. No, I got a garage back there. We could probably.
Right.
But we gotta find something to do with what's back there, cause she's got a lot of plans back there. At some point, we need to, we gotta find a place for the plants.
I think this is good, but I think we, we got a lot of talking to do, like, you know, staffing, you know.
Yeah, no, and I just want to open up the conversation and, and. I think, I think my next step in the direction, and I don't really have to earmark that if we don't want to, it's there if we ever want it, but. Like my next guy, I, I guess guidance, I like to have the council. Go ahead and form your committee, see where you go and then come back and talk with us. I mean, I think that's what I'm looking for. I'm not looking for any financial commitments at all, cause like I said, I've got a day thing for the architect. We all get our heads together, see what we can do and then come back to you and. See what we can afford. I mean, and like I said, if. If Dave's helping us out, which he. And maybe he'll do a whole show on it, then that'll, that'll get you economic development, it'll get you on TV. Cause I'll be on there anyway with one of the shows, but.
Sorry, I got rid of all my books, I shouldn't have.
I was almost told you, you posted those online one time, anyway. Are you guys, or is the council good with, at least, you know, for our committee moving forward? And yeah, you can be part of it. I'm sorry, I didn't, you can join us, it's, it's fine, I'm in the public. I mean, seriously, you're welcome to join us. Actually, it might help me get some money out of you, the rest of you.
Also some, some kid friendly stuff because we.
Sure.
You know, just like our seniors, we've got a huge population of kids and to see, you know.
Can I just drop my kids off down there?
Just drop it off.
Can't drop, no drop.
Drop off on Valentine's Day already.
Friendly type.
Uh, sure. I just, I just wanna get this idea started, do something with it, cause my thing, and maybe I'm thinking wrong, but. You know, the community gave these buildings to us. They voted for these buildings, and now I wanna give this building back to the community. I wanna do, you know, instead of putting offices in, I wanna give it something, you know, whatever we decide.
Hurrying.
Who?
Hurrying.
Oh, yeah.
Because, are we gonna park in the back?
You can park at the gravel lot next to it.
Can park in the gravel, I mean.
Yeah, you sure can.
Okay.
Yeah, that's. And and there might be some future plans for that at some point, but I don't.
Just as long as you don't encroach on Bemco's.
Well, that's what I'm kind of wondering if we're opening this up.
Employees park up in the front row, so where, where we have to play them back there. For this. Yeah, cause that, like, Ravington's in business. They load it up, you know, they, they stack them in there.
Cause that gravel park on his Bemco's.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's why I'm asking.
We're gonna park it in the back, we're parking on the side, parking in the front. I think we're gonna lose one spot with the crosswalk, but.
I think one thing that we're gonna find out is if we're looking at. The space there. If you, oh. You're saying not. Look at doing the building for the, a senior center, then you're looking at. You know, at least a couple of rooms for them, and then you got a coffee shop in there, a library. Uh, a reception area, and then you. But kid areas in there, and the kid areas are gonna have to be bigger. So I don't, I mean. I'm not an engineer, but I think you're running out of space.
I mean.
We got the garage back there too, it's not in that concept.
Need a coffee place in there. I mean, it's, you know, that's just a concept that's nice, but. It could use that space for more kid libraries.
And again, without dragging this all out all night, I mean, you know, we'll get the architect to show us.
Exactly.
And, and, and here for the citizens. You can come and say, this is what we want, and then this is what we want, and put it all together and see how it plugs in.
If we, if we get two rooms here and the center grew of the senior part. Participation grew and grew and grew.
You probably want a bigger building.
It might be something that we look at and make it a half and half. No, I mean, the new building down the, down the road.
Oh, I was talking about this.
Build it and then, and then. Half senior and half, it, it'd be a community center. Might, and you could have a divider in the middle, like some of them do that. You know, that you can open up and have the whole building.
Okay.
For one. Whatever, and then you can divide it and do one and one and the other and the other.
The fact is, because stays as it is now, large, I mean renovated, but it's large. Enough for bigger group activities. That seems fine and the different libraries, even the coffee, I like the idea. I think people might like the idea of the little coffee area and maybe not such. It had a lot of tables and chairs, but just where you go get your coffee and go.
Went to the park too. We got a park right there. They can go sit in the park.
Sort of work on and.
And again, that's why, that's why the architect needs to talk to us and we all need to get our heads together.
Talk, like, how, you know, how many started with the committees, years would use it, like, our community that. Maybe two percent of that would actually.
Join already in just a short time and they're all saying, we love to have a senior center. I mean, that's eighty, not, they're all so on the same day.
That's what I'm saying, so maybe instead of the six percent that we have in the city, maybe you get the two percent that would actually burn. Yeah, it's all, well, I think, yeah, I think we have a plan that we can move forward, right? We can have more conversations to get a committee.
We'll make sure the council's okay with me starting the committee and move forward. That, that's all I'm really looking for tonight. I just wanna show you what I'm up to and I'll keep the council up to date. So, y'all, I don't even think we need to vote. I just need kinda y'all agree with it. I don't think we need to vote, cause I'm not spending a lot of money or anything, so. You want?
One, just was wondering if Justin, if you had any.
Justin, you got any comments?
You good with that, Justin? Going ahead with that?
I'm, I'm, I'm totally good. I'm totally good with it, Bill. I think your committee is, uh, committee is the right thing to do. I think. Moving forward will probably evolve what we decide, but yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Okay, sounds good. All right.
Hey, hey, Bill. And i- if we decide to do a coffee shop, you know, we, we have some, obviously some very strong coffee shops in the area, you know, maybe we can extend and, and get some feedback from. From Randy and Catherine over there and see, you know, what are some thoughts around there? That way we build around businesses that have been in our backyard too.
Yes, yes. Or maybe we have. We could be, we could be number two.
Yeah.
All right, that's all I got. So.
We have other business.
Anybody have any other business?
So, I don't know, Bill or Lorene, are y'all tracking House Bill fourteen oh six? It's not a.
Yeah, we've been getting a lot of email, right, yes.
Huge thing, but. Come on, who?
Watch twelve oh seven too.
Who wants a ten foot tall electric fence? That's just ridiculous.
Watch twelve oh seven too, which talks about results. So.
Either way, we're zoning in the state.
Yeah, if you don't respond, it's automatic. Anybody got any other business?
I, I just have a, I'm just gonna throw this out as a suggestion. With our city growing so much and planning department has, or sorry, planning commission has two meetings a month. Our meetings, our council meetings are very long now. Doesn't make sense to have two council meetings a month?
Guess what I mentioned before you got here?
Is that what you did?
Two meetings or a meeting in the hole.
Because we, we get the planning. You know, they have their two meetings and then we get their two meetings condensed into one and it lasts four hours. And if we have public comment, we didn't have as much tonight, but. I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there. Does it make sense to have two short ones or one really long one once a month?
Typically, in a, in a, in a council meeting, there's not. As much discussion as we have in ours. It's, it's a motion. It's a vote, it's done. Um, so to Darren's.
Watching.
Darren's point about kinda what Bentonville does is they have a meeting in the hole before they have their council meeting. So that the discussion's kinda done, and then when they have their council meeting. They.
Yeah, whatever works. I'm just kinda saving a, what the school board does also. I'm just gonna say the school board does that too.
Yeah, whole first, yeah, they do.
Yeah, like, I think Bentonville has theirs on Monday. That's what I was talking to before we started. Like they have a whole minute meeting at home, Monday hash everything out, Tuesday they come in, they're done in fifteen minutes.
Whoa.
Yeah, no, I, I went to one.
How does that work with meeting in the hole? It has to be.
You can't vote, but.
Still, it's just like our work sessions, everything's still.
You just go through it all in the work.
Gotta be, right?
Can't, can't vote, you can't.
Okay.
No decision.
But they're in discuss, instead of sitting here discussing, we would discuss there and that way whenever it come to.
The reason.
Yes.
We used to have two meetings. And the reason we don't have anymore is because we would show up and meeting would last thirty minutes and we'd go home.
But how long ago was that? Didn't have it, did we have as much?
Not long ago.
It's not.
Two meetings a month and it wasn't done.
It's gotta be at least two.
It was, it was. It was, it was, I mean, if you had a meeting that lasted an hour and, and. It's been less than, it's been less than. Uh, maybe two years ago, we were. Bill was joking when we came in, he was. We're gonna be out of here in an hour and. Sometimes it was an hour and ten minutes, sometimes it was seventy, I mean, it was.
Before my time.
You know.
And, and I, and I, and I'll tell you, we have a lot of business up here and a lot of times we don't have as many, you know, like especially all those resolutions and stuff we did, so. I don't know.
I'd say tonight was a lot clearer than what, we had a lot of stuff.
We did have a lot of stuff in Bentonville too.
Beginning and the end of the year is, is usually longer meetings, but even into the middle of the year and it's gotta go.
The last meeting was four hours and fifteen minutes. The meeting before that was three hours and fifteen.
I say, since I've been on the board, it's been at least two and a half.
I get you, Amy.
We have planet meetings, too, I mean, we got planet meetings, too.
Planet meeting.
Longer as well. Yeah, we got a lot of meetings, so.
We're blessed.
I don't know, that's why I'm just trying to get out there.
Yeah, okay.
Wait, any other business?
You wanna try to speed them up, like you said, you have work sessions every other month. Is that bad to try to push them every month?
I agree, I I think we mentioned it in the beginning, having them once a month.
By the way, you can go over some of these, your other business, your updates on some of. Just make some of the business I often require that scott.
Which is kinda like what. The school board did, or the meeting at the corner, sort of, I'm the same thing.
It gives you two weeks to make any changes before.
And I've got a question.
I I guess, I had, he got some.
I got a question that I'm gonna run by you.
Okay, me, oh, him.
Where are, what is it looking like on the lawsuit? We're going to court, right?
Well, they they filed a uh complaints. We got, sir, when did we get served?
Twenty seventh, I think.
So, yeah, so.
I remember that day well.
So we, I mean, we've got thirty days from the twenty seventh to file and answer. Um, so, so no action whatsoever has has been taken. Uh, at this point, uh, opposing. Counsel did reach out to, I guess. Check to see if municipal league would handle it, municipal, uh, declined it.
Yeah, I let them know.
Uh, opposing counsel contacted me. Uh, and just wanted me to tell the counsel, and I'm not sure where it is, but apparently. The gas station's looking at the, across the street, I'm not sure which across the street, but that zone, they don't have to do anything, they don't have to comply with any of the.
Across Seaver Road.
So next to the Zumsteins, or Zumsteins, or or the.
Same side, west side of Main Street, just north.
Hey, Lorraine, Lorraine, get your bed.
And I'm still looking into. I don't know how the minutes, the report there, submittal. And I'm gonna have to listen to the tape and hear what's discussed. Because the approval letter doesn't state all of that, but there. Rarity talked about what they would have in each place, so. I'm looking into that, but as far as the approval letter that was. States that any conditional uses would have to come back. And request conditional.
That is in the P U D? Okay, okay. So, but anyway, he 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 just told me to to tell you guys that. Uh, also, you know, that, and and I I haven't looked statutory at this, but they're, they're going to attempt to seek. Whatever damages that they've lost in that, in the neighborhood of like eight hundred and fifty, eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, but, uh.
Damages.
What's that?
Damages.
Yeah.
Because it was already in the, in the long range plan was set for C three. And right across Seaver Road is C three, and we turned down. South of Seaver Road, so he's. I, Ryan, in my opinion, I don't think we, I don't think we stand a chance in court.
No, I mean, it's it's one of those, and you know, I I. What what they're alleging is that, you know, that we have a comprehensive plan, that this comprehensive plan. Uh, was was for something of this nature, a- and we're not following our own plan. Um, and.
But our comprehensive was a guide.
It is, but then also. You have to have a, a a very. High basis to not go with that plan, so I I guess an example would be. The opposite, does that make sense? So if, uh.
Cause we've done that, right? There've been things where that. We didn't follow the comprehensive plan, cuz it was a guide.
Right, but this was within the, basically, if someone comes to you and asks. To change it from something that's not necessarily in the comprehensive plan, you can potentially do that. Their allegation is here, they had the expectation that we were gonna be allowed to do this based on the comprehensive plan. And now we are not allowing to do that, so there's a completely different. Scrutiny, uh, that is applied, a- and courts typically. We're gonna look at our comprehensive plan to see what's out there. Um, and, you know, understand Benton County, uh, juries are typically. War, so never mind, uh, individuals who've been damaged. To the extent that people have a right to do with their property. What they want. As as they choose. So, yeah, it's, uh, um, we we've got a. Uphill man.
What's our? What would our plan of, next plan of action?
Well, yeah, for a next plan would be to to file and answer, which which, like I said, uh, I I have not done. Uh, at this point, I mean, the the council's got, I mean, hopefully, you you've got some. Choices that you can make, you, we we can fight hard, we can, you know, uh, attempt to enter into, you know, settlement negotiations. Um. With. And it's actually, that's really about it.
And with municipal league turning us down, whatever judgment is levied against us is our, our cross to bear.
It would've been ours anyway.
Yeah, yeah, I think it was.
It would've been ours anyway.
And I'm not sure the statutory authority on whether or not, you know, with regards to fees, you know, of course, you know, plaintiff is. Alleging that they're gonna ask for fees, I don't know if we can get that or not, but. I do think that we're. Going to have some significant issues, uh, prevailing in this one. I I wasn't at the meeting, but I I watched the meeting later, I obviously typed the minutes from the meeting. The the, one of the issues that I saw was we. The the motion was. No, but I vote no for the people. So, and the people's pretty vague, right, because you've got people that own property there that want to rezone it, and you've got people that live close to it. Some that want it, some that don't want it, some that expected it all along that it would be zoned that way, and and our response was, I vote for the people. Well, and and on that, I think, well, yeah, another concern we've got, and and I I know we made it clear, is we were voting on the zoning. Not the use, but I think a jury's going to look at that, and when they saw that thirty people. Said they don't want a gas station, and we're saying we're voting for the people, I I think a jury is going to see that, that we're voting on the use. Not on the zoning, I mean, again, I mean, that's, we'll have to pick a. A damn good jury. We'll see what happens, but, uh.
I don't know, when you're training. You know, zones, some zoning bulletins that I've read over the years, when you, you have to state a legitimate reason why you're voting. No, I'm voting no because I. The increased traffic is gonna create a safety concern based on all uses within the zoning district. Gas station.
Or people. I find it interesting that. Sometimes we vote no or yes, and we don't give a reason. Sometimes we're told to vote. With a reason. I've never been asked to give a reason for yes or no. So. Not when we were.
I thought we had said to give a reason when we said no.
I've never done that. So I'd like.
What is? And I guess in your response. I don't know. Can you ask what it would? Take to get the. I think that would be a good question.
Well, I I think they might be open to negotiation, in fact, you know, when when opposing counsel contacted me, indicated that. Uh, this gas station, it it, like I said, is looking to potentially go across the street. Uh, on it, and he thought that they had about. Yeah, maybe forty five days before they lost the deal, so I I I think if the council is inclined. To reconsider. I think time would be of of the essence to do so. Now, that said, I I I would not recommend the council reconsider tonight. But I I think if if you guys were to reconsider, I would think we'd need to set this for a special meeting, and I would, I would want to provide notice. Uh, to the surrounding property owners. Uh. Because I I don't want, while I don't, it's it's not required by law. I I, you know, I I don't want the.
Transparency.
Nation that that we're sneaking something past them.
And that would, that would be our cross, our. Burden is doing the postage and and everything, sending those registered.
Yeah, there's thirty, but there's thirty five property owners, I kinda looked at it already, so there's thirty five, but that'd be notified.
Those are probably all the emails that we got.
No, I I don't know about that, there's just thirty five adjacent properties, it's, they had to, they had to get a list of the notices that. There's thirty five of that I I seen on the list, I looked at, I I was just curious, so. And and I wanna ask you a question about, no, we we always should state a no, we got lax over time.
But we don't, but every time there's a special thing coming out, we get advised, make sure you give a reason why. We did it tonight, we did on that time.
The other thing, the other thing that should never ever have happened is. We should never have been told upfront what was going on the property. And that way, you're not voting for what's going on the property, where you're just voting on the rezone.
Well, doesn't, I think.
And that's something that.
It's in their reports, though.
It's not a matter of whether. Separate that into, that's a use, and you're working, you're voting strictly on the zoning of that property. And you have to look at all the other uses that can be.
Well, it's obvious, we can't, we can't separate the two.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I mean, I do, that's why I complained for the longest time about the R three medium density, because. Yeah, once we rezoned at R three medium density, even though the developer said they were doing single family, they could've said, oh, by the way, we're gonna build apartments. Yeah, we controlled it, controlled it by the area, so if they did a single family. Lots, then only a single family house could be built on there, but if I could've bought. My neighbor to the left and to the right of me before we changed our zoning code, and I tore down three houses and wanted to build apartments, the city couldn't have told me no. That's why I always had an issue voting with our old zoning. Because I knew in the back of my head. That. Whoever could've built apartments after they said, I changed my mind, I'm gonna build apartments, have a nice day. I've got forty acres on R three.
Yeah, so so ultimately, I I I will file and answer, we have to do that regardless, but. Um, if the council was inclined to revisit it. We'd probably have to get notices out, and and the other thing I didn't need to do is, would be to reach out to the plaintiff and see if they're even. Willing at this point.
Okay, may not be.
They they may not be, right, exactly. Guns, or what what do you guys wanna do?
I'm for saving the city money. I I think there's a lot of stuff that we could use.
Build a senior center.
Eight hundred thousand dollars on.
And again, I wanna make it clear that I'm I'm not certain statutory that they. Have a have a right to that, but they're certainly alleging. What they do at this point.
In favor of negotiations.
The motion that we. Reach out and and, uh. See what we can do about. Making this painless for the city.
I have to remember, too. Our citizens are part of this city, and a lot of them came and spoke. And emailed.
When I got off.
Their thoughts, so they are part of the city as well.
Since this happened, I've had a lot that have come and said. It's a highway, what do you expect to go on a highway? And and on the other. Standpoint, if traffic is an issue, if he. If that. Owner of that property just goes in and puts a subdivision in there, you're gonna have a lot more traffic. So traffic is not an issue. I mean. You can do what you want, he's already, it's already set. It's zoned to put housing. Area there. So. I'm saying that if you put the houses that he builds in there, you're looking at probably. Generally, at least four cars, am I not wrong? At least four cars per home, you know who I'm talking about, and the houses that he builds. He's looking at probably, you're looking at about four cars per home, and I don't know. Lorraine, what, if he was to max it out in there for the zoning, how many houses could he get in there on? What is it, six and a half acres? Approximate. Somewhere around forty. It would be about forty homes.
Four or five acre. Might be more on R two. Five or six per acre.
Well, I think a lot of the the residents that spoke, too, wasn't just about traffic. It was about in ten years, what does crime look like with having a store there? This is just from what I've heard. So.
And 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 that's the problem, though, is they were talking about the. What it was.
I'm talking about, and and when I'm talking, I'm talking about commercial, because commercial, that's a neighborhood commercial, correct?
The reason that it was changed on the comprehensive plan. Is because it was determined that that would be. An excellent location for commercial. And that's why, like, the Athletic Center been in there, and they had the shop that they used for construction. And it's on two arterias, and that's, that's a prime area. For commercial.
It's it's not where the daycare, is that whole area not already zoned R three?
B three over there.
And it goes. All of, all of the Caulfield's all property.
All C three.
That's the, that's the least intense of use on a commercial. And what, you, you couldn't send it back to to get anything less, that's as.
As low as you can go.
Right, you know, I live back there, yeah, I'm not terribly excited.
I live two blocks.
Yeah. But.
I live on Seaver.
Yeah.
And to what Darren said last time. For the people that live there, it may relieve some pressure from cases. In hindsight, though, you're not gonna leave seventy two or one oh two to go look out that gas station. You're not gonna go looking for that station. One oh two had, or Casey's is one, and seventy two has gas stations in Bentonville or in Mossy. It's gonna be school traffic and people that live there, they're gonna go to school or come from school and work at home and stop there, you're not gonna add any more traffic. It's gonna be easier than me going by Casey's traffic to get to one oh two and then trying to get alcohol. It's already zoned, dude.
I have a question, and and he, I think, he, uh, Keith asked, it's getting late, sorry. What, what? Now that's settled, I thought all they asked for is relief, is just to zone according to the comprehensive plan. I read that after a survey. And I said to all of you, too, but I thought they just wanted, the only relief they wanted is just to, the reason on it per the comprehensive plan.
They they've got a complaint, they can amend their complaint.
Sure they can.
Do whatever, so I mean, it, but by virtue that it, I mean, there's, there's nothing on the table at this point.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know, ultimately, it's it's up to a judge or jury, uh, to determine what happens. I would suspect that if we were to come back and say, hey, we're willing to do it, that they they, they're probably gonna be at court, but I mean, there's, there's no guarantees.
Yeah, I don't know.
You know, I I I'm not gonna reach out to them, and. Unless I believe that the council is is one to, to entertain it, right, I mean, I'm, there's no reason to waste their time.
All right, I make a motion at this time to hold a special meeting. And. I know it's not gonna happen this month. And. The quickest time we can. Uh, with getting the notices out and everything. Uh. And a special meeting would be for. Yes. Uh, resolving the lawsuit.
Like, I would, if that's what you're going with, I mean, to give a fifteen day notice. And time for the staff, like, I get Nicole.
I thought we're more looking for something to, for Brian to do.
We could do March sixth.
Well, the the. My understanding would be, and what I will do is, is I can reach out to them and indicate that you've said it, but I mean. I I think if you're setting a meeting, you would, you would set. It for, to rehear the ordinance. Is what it would be.
Yes.
Doing that, showing this out there, doing that, doesn't that set a precedence that if somebody. Wants to take the city to court?
I I think it does, but I I mean, but but ultimately. Based on on their complaint, I mean, I I I I think they prevail. On this, I mean, we we have a, we we have protocol, we didn't follow our own protocols. On this, with the comprehensive plan, uh, and whatnot, so I mean, so so I.
I I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
I guess I'm confused, cuz there's been other instances where we have not adhered to comprehensive plan. And that's, you know what I mean, it's, so it's a little bit confusing, sometimes it's the guide, sometimes it's not.
Well, typically, if if you're going, I I think usually we're going to a lesser intensive use on, I I can't think of it, is that, is that correct, Eric? Do you think of a time when we've gone to a more intensive use?
Okay, then.
Well, I mean, it it typically, you're not gonna have pushback on it. Uh, um, you know, no.
And if we wanted to, you could do like other communities, pass an ordinance, it says if somebody wants to do something that doesn't meet. Our land use plan, they have to up, request through the planning commission that the. That the land use plan be updated that then comes to us. And then the rezoning can follow it at the uh on a parallel. Cause I think your example is where we've shown areas that were industrial. And we rezoned it for single family. So those people were probably happy to get to single family or areas we showed commercial.
But yeah, and I guess on that, the the opposite, if if we've got something that's 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 zoned R three. Whatever it is, and someone wants to come in and build a factory, our comprehensive plan says, no, this is residential. We have a a rational basis to not allow industrial in. If if our comprehensive plan says it's this. And someone's coming in with this, now we have a problem with it.
And the other, and the other thing with this one is is the planning commission looked at it. And looked at them at all the reasons that you decide whether you're gonna. Send it for a reason. And and everybody said yes. And then we end up going against what the planning commission said also.
And I don't know that I'm so concerned about that. I mean, a- again, you. I in a perfect world, you wanna, I mean, you you you've appointed a plan commission. To do all the the legwork and to go through all that, and you would think for the most part, you you to agree with with what they say, but I'm I'm more concerned. With the mechanism that 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 we're not. We do, we, or at least they are alleging, I want to be real careful because it's on the record.
Thank you.
Well, um, that they are alleging that we have this use and now we're not permitting this use. And then you 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 tailored that with. The people complaining about. A particular use. Rather than the 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 and and it, I I I think a jury could make the determination. That the vote was on the use and not the zone.
All the discussion about the fuel station, but not about the zoning.
And it's a possibility too, if I'm not. I mean, I may be wrong, but this is gonna be up to the jury to decide the damages, right?
We will, they're asking for a jury trial, so yes.
So, I mean, a jury might look at, and and I'm going by what I've been told in the past, going to court. The jury doesn't. If it, if they're gonna decide against the city, they're gonna say the city's got heavy pockets. And they may, they may give you, give the developer a a lot more money than what he's asking for.
You you typically see that particularly in condemnation actions. That, you know, they, and particularly in Benton County, that that we are very, very protective of. Property rights and a person's ability to do what they want with their own property. And and when they come. It it indicate that, you know, hey, he's been a. Whatever they're gonna say, they're gonna paint. Uh, Mr. Steele to be a model citizen and whatnot, and he's, you know, trying to make a living and and. This horrible city is preventing him from being able to do, you know, he wanted to do so that he could maximize his land. Is what I anticipate the way it'll be presented.
I've got a motion on the table.
The motion would.
For that, you would need to let Brian have the authority to.
Oh, that's, that's what he's saying he needs.
You're talking about a special meeting.
Yes.
Well, what what I propose is if if you guys want to schedule a a special meeting to put the ordinance back on the table. I I think because we're all here, set it. What I can do then is I can reach back out to opposing counsel and say, hey, we're liv- willing to. You know, we we've got a meeting set. Are you guys interested in trying to reach a resolution? And if they're not, you know, and and it's one call or email, and then we can cancel the meeting.
Oh, is that meaning to revote or reconsider the ordinance that was, that is that what the meeting would be?
Yes, that's what I think.
I'm trying to figure what I need to do on my end as far as ordinances or whatever. Would it be the same ordinance or be a new one? They're gonna be in order.
Right.
I was asking, I need to go.
I think you can do the same ordinance, just retitle it. Uh, a new, a new.
I think it'll be a new number.
Yes.
I think it'll be a new number, it'll be the, since it's the same language in it, but it'll be.
You can take the same ordinance and then just put. Twenty twenty two.
Right.
Whatever the next ordinance.
The other one failed, it was not tabled. Uh, so, yeah, we do, we need to do it just to, and that that would be the only change you need to make would be the ordinance number. And that's, uh. Uh, and then that gives me the opportunity. With through Maureen or anybody else, if there's anything else we want to tailor. With that, I potentially enter negotiations. Well, I don't know, actually, I don't know. Well, I guess, yeah, they can, they can, they can amend. Uh, if there's. Other particulars that we want to address, I could address that through their council. And and we could modify the ordinance if necessary. In effect.
I guess my only other question, and I'm just trying to get an agenda together. And I'll do whatever the council tells me to do, but.
You're gonna have to. Notify the public.
Oh, no, no, we we would, we would, yeah, we would send letters to the fifteen.
Right.
So so. So so I mean, we could send a letter to the fifteen, let them know there's gonna be a special meeting. Uh, my only question is, you know, we've already heard from the public. It twice now, we heard from the planning meeting and here, I want to add public hearing to this again. I mean, because we've already heard all their comments. I mean, in between times, they can email you if they have concern.
Well, I just wanted to do it, right? Whatever it's fine, just this is so controversial that I I I think you.
I'll I'll just do what you tell me.
If we did not allow it.
Yeah, we normally don't.
Public would think that we're trying to. End of the rug.
Not a legal sport, but I think absolutely we need to give their the opportunity to speak. And because I.
That's why I asked, I don't, we never do it, so I'll do whatever. It's fine with me, I just want.
We haven't chosen a date for the special meeting, you know, we got.
No, I I think I think calculated while y'all were talking. And I figured if we got them out by Friday. Weekend. We could probably, that it's, we need, he says fif- they say fifteen days, we can meet on March sixth, on Monday.
I will not be here.
Possibly.
Will you pop in?
Possibly, I will not be.
Yes, you can pop in.
Can you pop in on Zoom?
I, and I'm tied, I.
Might be able to do a Zoom because everything.
Well, let me know for sure while we're working on air.
I've not been approved for my travel yet, but I've got a horse that's. March sixth through the tenth.
I can make a phone call and. You don't want to do it on Sunday? No, you don't do Sunday, I said. And Sunday we work, but I don't think we're doing it on Sunday night, do we? No, I mean.
Six is a Monday.
Yeah.
You wouldn't be on the Sunday either, though, would you?
No, I mean, I have my travel plans in, yeah, Sunday. My travel plans is.
Hey, hang on, let me, let me look at Plan B here, hold on. Oh, today's fourteenth, we got them out by Thursday.
Well, I'll be in a different time zone also. So.
How about, how about we did March second? We can get it out. We can do first thing in the morning, I can help her.
Yeah.
March sixth is probably, March sixth is probably where we're at.
March second in terms of thirty days, so you get thirty days responding. No, I'm I'm gonna, I I I've determined I'm gonna file an answer regardless.
Yeah, you got to.
To preserve our our. And that's not gonna affect anything, that's just.
March sixth, like, for your rest. That's a Monday, yours to retire, but. You call from the council, you will, March sixth, is that any good for you or?
Available, but we didn't say if we're.
Oh, no, I'm trying to pull you get, pull you all on that. I think Darren's the only one that might have a conflict.
If we do March sixth, can we do it early? I've got, I've got something. Later, I mean, can we do five or?
Do whatever they want. I mean, I would help all day.
We can't do five.
You can't do five.
With five thirty, do you?
Yeah, it's not gonna. It's gonna be more than five minutes. That's gonna be a long meeting.
Is, can Justin, is he still on?
We could do the eighth. Or we can do, well.
I'm free the eighth, Justin would be. Still not back.
Oh, you're still gone.
What's the difference in time?
Just wanna do the next council meeting, I hate it.
No.
Drag it out, but.
This is gonna be a special council meeting. We need to show, we need to show that.
When you coming back?
Is there a second to motion?
I'd be flown back in on the eleventh.
I don't think there is yet.
Of course, it hasn't been approved, but I've submitted my travel.
We do it on March thirteenth, the Monday before the council meeting?
I'll be available then.
Yeah.
Can we do that? The Monday before the could, but, I mean, we could do it to Kathy, but it'll probably be a long meeting, or I mean, longer. We, can y'all do March thirteenth? March thirteenth?
Sounds like we're all available.
March thirteenth, March thirteenth, that gives plenty of time, March thirteenth. Josie?
Yes.
And I'll reach out to Justin.
Not available.
Yeah, I'm it's, I'm not.
Well, we have to bring Tina or something.
I I'm available. Every day of the week at the sixth.
Maybe this is a sign.
Yeah, maybe so.
Yeah, no one's available.
You you can't zoom in. Well, you need to be here.
Yeah, yeah, this is.
The lawyer needs to be here.
Well, Carl's not here, so we don't know exactly where we're gonna take the money out of.
Third, I mean, it's Friday night, but, oh, you're not, okay.
One of you are.
I mean, I'm just a recorder.
You know, you you aren't here, right? The six was still, but. I think y'all wanna hedge on the six was there.
Darren.
You can to make sure you got all your. Well, and and the other thing I would say, like I said, there is not, we're we're, we don't have to deal with a. The legal requirement. For notice, but if we can get notices out, I mean, we could do it earlier, like the twenty eighth. Oh, we've got that. We've got another.
I mean, we could put them out tomorrow. Me, me and Nicole could knock it out, and, you know, we we got staff, we could get them into Valbar.
Right, since there is no actual legal. Requirement for the fifteen days is if possible to do it. Unless, you know, was there seven to ten days?
I I mean.
Twenty seventh? Yes, since they, I just want to ensure that these people are. Get something out.
Why are you here?
Week, is that when you're, I'm out this, we're on the same week.
Twenty fourth.
I I do too, and then we come back on.
How about twenty third? This month.
Twenty third.
Twenty third.
Twenty third.
What'd you say, Brian?
I'm free that.
Twenty third, twenty third. Twenty third.
I'll make myself available. Six to eight hundred thousand dollars for the city.
Yes or no, twenty third? Twenty third.
Yes.
Twenty third, that, oh, Misty, you said twenty third? And you're, you're available to Todd. I I can record it for you. We 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 can record it. I think we're, I think we're settled on the twenty third, and I'll, we'll get a letter out tomorrow.
We'll get some adjust.
Yeah, I'll I'll get ahold of him.
At six P M?
Yes. I'll I'll I'll, let me send myself a message so I can. Hey. Ryan, you want to reach out to them first thing in the morning? No, make sure that's a go for them.
We have a second for this.
Well, wait, yeah. So so first off, I mean, I I think. And and that would be my question for you guys. Uh, what I would hope would be, I'm I'm gonna open the door and make sure that they're on board to negotiate or to revisit it. And then see what if anything they have and 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 what I would suspect. I- is that they would give us permission to to uh attempt to revote on the exact same ordinance. That said, uh, do you guys have any additional? Things that you, if if you're going to entertain visiting this, any additional conditions or restrictions? That we would want to make part of this that I could present to opposing counsel.
Good to see what else you would need to present. Don't think need to be asked.
Fine, okay, it's, yeah, okay.
You're saying in your response to them. You're, you can't put conditions on the rezone.
You're you're absolutely right, okay, you're you're absolutely right, okay, so.
So Brian, I guess, well, we all have a second first, we have a second, okay, yeah. Like, we want a second, second, you be, you got a second now.
Would you just, like I said, it's it's the least.
So, so basically, if we're coming back, we're saying we're gonna revote again. On the same ordinance.
Are are they on board to even consider that, which I would expect they would, why wouldn't they? But.
On the twenty.
If twenty, if arguably, if he's lost the sale. Um, that would be a reason why he may not, uh, at this point, if he's out. You know, three quarter of a million dollars.
I still think this sets a precedent for other. Future.
Well, again, you've got, you can look at each situation.
No, I know, I'm just saying, oh. Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion, and you, you put the twenty third into motion? At six P M? February, and then the second by Darren. Do you have more discussion? Done. Do a roll call.
Misty, Darren warning.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
He taking both of them.
Yes.
Amy Rocha.
And then I'll get ahold of Justin, so you got enough for a bar. So, and you you said you were available twenty third, right?
Yes.
Put it on calendar six. And then you need to contact him early, let me know right away, because as soon as you let me know, we'll get the notice, we'll we'll write. I just, I'm gonna wait to hear from you. Because I don't want to send a bunch of mail, it'd be the call in, and maybe Kay will help us, we'll get it out. Enter my letters proofread. We, oh, wait, wait, we gotta come back to this. We have other business. So my coffee conveyor is this Saturday evening, I wanted to come in. The work session. I have it scheduled for February twenty eighth. However, several of you told me you couldn't make the twenty eighth when I got here.
Correct.
So I don't know, we want, when do we want to reset that for? I. You tell me. March twenty eighth was open, but then Amy, it became, she didn't want to wait that long, so.
That's fine, whatever anybody else wants.
I mean, eight, I think everybody told me you were good to March twenty eighth, right?
Yeah, that's.
Darren was back and good, right? Oh, no, you, March twenty.
March.
March.
March twenty eighth?
Yeah, oh, yes. Yeah, that's our next time, and you're good March twenty eighth?
Yes.
You were good?
I'm pretty sure.
Amy's good. I will make, and then I'll make sure my speaker's good before I, and I'll send you a notice or emails. I want to make sure he's available. Our speaker, but. And then we'll make, we'll tell the planning commission. March twenty eighth for change.
Alan?
You're pushing it back now two months.
That's, I agree.
You're not trying to find like a Thursday? Says it was, we already had a work session there, the schedule requires, we were doing it every other month. But you put it back to January. It it pushes you back this thing two full months. I, we weren't trying to find an open Thursday or something.
Oh, I try, I want to try with February, see what it says.
Not even February, I mean, if you find out Wednesday, Thursday, something in the March.
I I think the, I think the understanding that could come out of that meeting. Would really help things that will be decided between now and then. So each month, it's two meetings and how many items that. There's gonna be questions so that both sides understand. These are the legal things we're voting. Now, there are feelings and wishes and hopes and all.
And to see the land use plan, where we were, where we are now, that totally helps. And. Where we're growing the city.
So where we want to set this meeting for? I think it'll be March second, because I already.
I mean, this one isn't a.
It would have to be next month.
Notify anyone on it either.
President's Day. Find it. It's week twenty, President's Day, nobody gonna do it. Offices are closed.
Offices are closed. Twenty first is planning. Tuesday. Twenty first, yes. Special counsel. Special counsel. It's gonna have to be the twenty second.
You can squeeze it in before the special.
And whether or not the planning commission wants to.
Yeah, we gotta notify the special.
Back to back.
Yeah, we gotta notify them too, so.
But.
Listen, is it a potential, I mean, this doesn't need to be politics out. About to have one today, planning commission, here's the options for all.
And even if we don't have this special speaker, I mean.
Well, I want, I want, I want Northwest Regional Plan there, cause it all's fallen on the comprehensive plan, we need to update.
Our, our planning department can't, and, and the commissioners and.
I wanted, I wanted to help with this.
I think on the twenty second. It's too short notice.
I think he brings a lot of stuff to the table.
You'll have to make sure that the planning folks can make it to.
Let me try for the twenty second, I'll reach out to him.
That's the day after their planning commission. Meeting, scheduled meeting.
Actually, they got a short meeting that day, we just have it right after their meeting. They're already here.
Yeah, I mean, that's an option.
They're already here, it's, it's short, it doesn't look very long.
Coming to their meeting, and we just do a planning meeting after that.
Come at eight o'clock.
Been here till midnight.
Here at midnight. What, what do you all do with this work session, I mean, I, I'm not really clear what we.
Already looking at. Start at six and then in that.
Second, second. Bye, he's available for that day, I guess. Send us all out.
Twenty second. I got, I'll check.
I mean, it's a planning commission, planning meeting.
As they're saying.
Put us here three nights in a row.
All right, I'll reach out to them. I'll let you know. We're not putting it on yet till we hear back. I don't, I don't know. I mean, hey, you don't, I mean, I'm not trying to be negative, but. I don't know, it's, they, they don't meet on twenty first.
They want to, but they don't.
All right.
Are you still wanting to have? I have a mission to be there.
I'm not sure, I'm giving it up enough time, but. We, I get that, but. Everybody was good for the March.
Starts on me right now.
I, I haven't spoke to anybody, yeah, I just, you know.
No.
Hawkins. I ain't gonna be here. Are you gonna need one second, I guess, is everybody? Let me see what I can do, I'll, you know, as soon as I hear back.
If that doesn't work.
You know. Everybody's gone the first week of March. I mean, seriously, they're, they're all, not, not being negative, but it's, yeah, a lot of them are out, so.
Yeah, the twenty fourth's come back following Monday.
That's why we're just going, everybody. I'll reach out to the planning commission, see what I find out, let y'all know. Anything else? Anything? We'll make motion to adjourn.
I'm going.
We got a motion for Keith, we got a second.
Second, second, second.